Good afternoon and welcome to the Outfield Town Council meeting for Tuesday, July 7th, 2020. Thank you for joining us virtually. Before we get into our agenda business for the day, I want to call the meeting to order and read the following statement about how we are managing our teleconference meeting. This special meeting of the town council is being held pursuant to government code section 54953B related to teleconferencing of meetings. In addition, this meeting format is pursuant to the governor's proclamation of a state emergency and executive orders where certain sections of the Brown Act related to teleconference meetings have been waived. Town manager is present in his office. I am present here in the council chambers. Vice Mayor Dorman and council members Moller, Dornbecker, and Durham, along with staff, are participating remotely by video/audio in conformance with the governor's executive order. There have been opportunities for public comment to be sent in, and we will be identifying those comments as appropriate during the agendas, the agenda items. I now like to ask the town clerk to conduct the roll call and ask each member of the council to respond to the questions of are they able to hear the proceedings and if to confirm they have a copy of the meeting agenda. So please, Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes and yes.
Councilmember Durham?
Yes to both.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Here and yes to both.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here and yes, I have the copies in front of me. I let the record reflect all council members have indicated they're able to hear each other and have today's agenda. In general, members of the public have been able to offer public comment via the email Before we proceed with the agenda, I'd like our viewers to know that any vote taken during this teleconference portion of the meeting will be taken by a roll call vote, as we just did for a roll call by the town clerk. In addition, public hearings and administrative regular items that have representatives that are not staff will be, that will be providing presentations as they would a normal council meeting will be allowed into the virtual meeting upon their agenda item. So with that, we have already taken the roll. If you would all please join in the Pledge of Allegiance. Again, as usual, I'll turn my camera to show the flag if you need that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and one. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to adoption of our agenda for today. Is there a motion to that effect?
Hello.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Moller, second by Vice Mayor Dorman. Roll call, please, Michelle.
Repeat the motion in second, please, Mayor.
Motion, Councilmember Moller, second, Vice Mayor Dorman, to adopt the agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Yes.
Mayor Dun, or Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes.
Councilmember Durham?
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up is public comment on items not listed on our agenda for tonight. Do we have any that are, for items not on the agenda, Michelle?
No, we do not at this time.
All right, thank you very much. We will move on now to our consent calendar. First, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar items, items 6A through F?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented?
Make the motion.
I think I heard Councilmember Moller make the motion and Councilmember Durham seconded. A roll call, please, Michelle.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Durham?
Yes.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Somebody answer the phone. That, the consent calendar passes unanimously, thank you. The first of our two presentations today, item 7A, the first will be a presentation by John Tudor, our Napa County Registrar of Voters regarding the upcoming consolidated general municipal election of November 3rd, 2020.
And I have, I have just admitted Mr. Tudor into the meeting.
And I see his name, there we go.
Here I am. Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. A pleasure to meet with you the first time this way. So Michelle has asked me to cover a couple of topics, and what I want to start with is just a general overview of what's going on with this coming election. So as you're aware, it makes no impact on Napa County because we're already a Voters' Choice Act county, and therefore we've been mailing ballots to every voter for, actually, not only since June of 2018, but all the way back pretty much to 2008. And so the, our voters are pretty used to vote-by-mail ballots. We still have voters who think that they're junk mail and throw them in the trash or recycle them or something. So we still have those voters who come to us for a replacement ballot. We're very much hoping that because of what's going on out there in the pandemic world, that we'll get less of that this election. So the Secretary of State and the governor have required other restrictions on the election. We're going to be providing personal protective equipment, PPE, not only to our vote center workers, but also to our voters. So any voters who do try and undertake in-person voting will be greeted and will be screened. I don't think we're taking temperatures, we're still talking about that, but we will be screening them with questions about their health and whether they have been exposed as far as they know to the virus. We'll be issuing them masks if they don't have a mask. I want to make it clear to you that we've heard from several sources that we cannot deny someone access to a voting center if they won't wear a mask. That's a constitutional right to vote that overcomes the constitutional need to keep all of us healthy, but we will make special arrangements if someone, or if someone can't wear a mask for legitimate exemption reasons, we'll make special circumstances within that vote center to accommodate that voter. We're still up in the air as to whether we'll be issuing personal protective equipment beyond masks. We're thinking about hand coverings. We have a whole bunch of disinfection routines we're working on, and so we're not quite there yet. But that gets to the main impact on Yountville, which is we cannot have the vote center at the veterans' home. As you're all aware, they are totally locked down, and so there is no traffic in or out of the veterans' home, and they certainly don't want outside traffic in or out of the veterans' home. I doubt that things, given what's going on right now at the moment within Napa County and the pandemic, that we're going to be in a much different situation that Saturday, the 31st of October than we are today. So we're planning now, so the question came up, well, if it's not the veterans' home, how about a second location? Well, the other piece of this, within the town of Yountville, the other piece of this puzzle is we're having resistance from our vote center workers about being vote center workers and being in a position where they may be exposed to contact with individuals. As you know, the disastrous Wisconsin primary, 50 people were infected, both voters and staff in that election, and we think some of the same things may have happened in Georgia and a couple of the other elections that weren't well-run. Our election will be well-run, but that kind of concern does spread among the community. So we are probably going to reduce two vote centers from what we had in March. One, of course, will be Yountville, and by the way, we didn't do this lightly, you are an important part of the community. The vote center in Yountville was the least utilized, might have been because of its location, but it also just happened to have been the least utilized of our vote centers. And with the, our constraints on vote center workers, we're also closing one of our major vote centers in Napa. We had three in March, will only have two. There's a conflict there also because that vote center is also designated as a shelter if there's a public safety power shut-off, which may occur. And so there is, we, there's another reason, just like the veterans' home was a reason. So we'll be down to six additional vote centers plus our office instead of the eight that we had in March. And of course, then we are going to keep the Las Flores Vote Center open, which is in north Napa and very close to Yountville. And of course, the St. Helena Vote Center at the library will be open. So you're pretty much right in between two vote centers, about the same distance apart. And we will be making sure that Yountville voters are aware of their in-person vote, in-person voting opportunities at those two vote centers, the closest, and of course, our office, which will be a vote center as it always has been. So I'd be happy to answer any questions at that point on the vote center issue, and otherwise I'll move on to the other topics that Michelle asked me to discuss.
I'll check and see if we have any questions from our council members. Vice Mayor Dorman, question?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Tudor. So what is the distance to the Las Flores Vote Center?
I think it, I'll have to look it up, but my guess is it's about six miles. I can run a Google map search really quickly and go from the community center in Yountville to the Las Flores Center, but I think it's about six miles. And it's not that much further, I think, to the St. Helena Library.
And do you know whether public transportation regularly serves one or both of those vote centers, Las Flores or St. Helena Library?
Well, currently, as you may be aware, the, the only buses running on regular schedules are the 10 and 11. Of course, the 29 runs, but it goes down to the Bay Area. So the 10 is within a few blocks of the library. It stops right by City Hall in St. Helena. And the, there is no, there is, there is a route that runs near Las Flores, but it's on-demand. So anyone trying to get to Las Flores would have to take the 10 from Yountville and then arrange for an on-demand pickup by that bus. I think they would switch at the park-and-ride lot by Trancas and Redwood Road, and there is a bus from there that goes to Las Flores. It's not an easy one, but it is something that someone can arrange using the NVTA app on their phone to be picked up and meet a bus at the transit center and take them to Las Flores. And of course, they can come to us just as easily because the 10 and the 11 both stop just a block and a half, or two blocks from our office.
Okay, thank you. And if we were able to solve the location and volunteer problem, would you consider a voters' center here in Yountville?
Well, we're currently 22 vote center workers short, and we are out advertising for them. I'm certainly willing, if you all want to publicize, that our vote center worker application is open on the county website, and it will be open through the end of August. There's, if, you know, if we got a number of people from Yountville to fill in the holes, we would see. My guess is that's not going to happen because our vote center workers are shuttled around the county as needed. So my guess is, given the constraints, we're probably going to be, excuse me, in the no Yountville vote center position when we get to October.
Thank you. Thanks for being with us today.
We're gonna, Mr. Tudor, I think we're gonna have to talk more about this because to not have a vote center for an entire community, on its face, I find kind of unacceptable. So we're gonna have to talk a little bit more about what our options are, and I don't know that it's our responsibility to get our residents to volunteer to staff it, but since you painted this scenario, we need to have more dialogue about how to solve this. Not only do we have a more senior population that might find it harder to travel even six miles to not have a single location, could be problematic. So I think we need to have a little bit more conversation now that you've presented this likely scenario. So Councilmember Dornbecker, question?
Yes, please, for Mr. Tudor. However, the mailbox item that is usually out by community center will be there so people can drop off their ballots there, is that correct?
Absolutely, Councilmember Dornbecker. All of our 11 drop boxes will be open. We had the most we've ever had in March, and they'll continue to all be there for November 3rd, and we're encouraging people to use options other than in-person voting to deliver their ballots. So the drop box, of course, the post office is right there as well, and as you're all aware, all return ballot envelopes are now postage-paid throughout California, which will make it as easy for someone to drop it in the mail and let, and no more expensive than dropping it in our drop box.
Can you tell me, in the past, how many people have actually used the voter, you know, the actual physical voter place in Yountville?
Yes, we only had 143 people use the vote center in Yountville, and the majority of those were members of the home. We didn't have too many outsiders actually use it. It was very popular at the home members. We've, of course, discussed with them, and they understand the circumstances. About 5% of our voters actually took the time to do in-person voting in March, and of those, about 2%, were on, I'm sorry, about 3% were actually on Election Day. And so that's always our crunch point, is having large groups of people show up on Election Day when they finally wake up on Monday night or Tuesday morning and realize there's an election going on. And that's what you saw in Wisconsin and Georgia and a number of other places where you saw those long lines, where people, and hopefully with the extent of how the pandemic has been going on, there'll be more people aware of the other ways of delivering their ballot.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think it's of note that when you have the vote center up at the campus of the veterans' home, the general public probably doesn't even appreciate the fact that they could have used it if, if they knew that it existed. We still need to have a better solution for the 800 to 900 residents of the home and how we can make sure that they're able to vote and not necessarily very mobile to get down to Napa. So we'll continue to talk about that part. But you had some other topics to cover, Mr. Tudor?
Yes, Michelle asked me to cover a couple of ones, but Mayor Dunbar, one thing on what you just said, we welcome your, I know how involved you and all members of the council are with the veterans' home. If you can open lines of community, not that we don't have them as well, but knowing how closely the town and the veterans' home are tied together, anything you can do to get suggestions from the home, ideas for where we can provide better service to the home in terms of ballot pickup or ballot delivery besides the mail or replacement ballot. One thing I do want to mention on that topic is we're hoping that we will be able to provide people with replacement ballots electronically using the Remote Accessible Vote-by-Mail system. It's a system which actually produces a paper ballot. You have to have a computer and a printer to use it, but you print out your paper ballot, mark it, put it in an envelope, and sign it, so it's absolutely secure. It's not, as people say in air quotes, "internet voting" or "online voting." It's another paper-based, which is the most secure way. So we're hoping people, as they get closer to the election, will be able to take advantage of that. We're still talking to the Secretary of State on that topic, but we are working on it.
And I can easily commit myself, I'm sure that the entire council and, and our staff, that we will communicate with the Veterans' Home Administration about how we can potentially either have some designee at the home, for example, that can be properly trained and certified to receive ballots, and then something as simple as drive them down California Drive and meet a properly-certified elections official at the bottom of the hill that can then take them, something like that if we need to, so we can get creative and make sure that all of our veterans are able to vote if want to. Vice Mayor Dorman, your hand is raised?
Yes, sorry, thank you. I have a follow-up question. We've been talking about voting and actually putting your ballot in the box or punishing your ballot. I have used voters' center, and I have friends who have used voters' center at the veterans' home, to answer questions, both on and prior to Election Day. Is that not also an important piece of the voters' center being here?
Well, that's always one of the roles of the vote center, is to allow people who have issues that have come up, you know, the dog ate their ballot at the last minute or whatever, that's what they're for. So yes, that is an important role. We will, as your discussions go on, we'll be happy to join in with those and see if, just as the mayor mentioned, if there's ways we can provide some further service either at Town Hall or at the community center with a one-person, not so much being a vote center because not all the equipment will be there, but answering questions, something like that. That's certainly something we could think about, especially on Election Day. So keep those in mind as we move forward.
Thank you.
And there, there was one suggestion offered to add a similar drop box to what we have at the community center up at, adjacent to the post office at the veterans' home, for example, as another way that we could try to have secure drop-off opportunities at the, at the home. So we'll, we'll talk more about that, but go ahead, Mr. Tudor, with the rest of your presentation.
So Michelle asked me to cover the cost of the election. It will be, you have a measure on the ballot, so I can't remember if you had one in March. You didn't have one in March, so your last one was the TOT measure, which was several elections ago. So that will, your measure will more than offset the savings, assuming there is no vote center, but it won't be substantially different. So your election budget should be about the same as it was in November of 2018, just for your planning purposes.
And we did have the countywide housing TOT, that was 2018, correct? So that's what you were referring to?
Yes, I can't remember.
We had the GAN limit also.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, so budgeted the same as 2018, roughly, we can expect for this November?
That should, that should work out fine.
Okay.
And then electronic signatures, so Michelle asked me if we've heard anything about allowing electronic signatures on nomination papers. I have not, and what we're trying to do is we are doing all of our nominations by appointment and as much as possible online. So as you know, we handle for the school districts, the college, the board, they're all school districts, but people don't think of them that way, the Board of Education, and then, and of course, now the new Napa Valley Unified School District trustee areas, as well as the Regional Park and Open Space District and four small water districts, actually, three small water districts that work with our office. So we are sending, we get an email address, I just got a call this morning from someone who's interested in running for the County Board of Education, and we're going to email her her preliminary form, she'll fill that out, we'll send her the candidate handbook, and then we'll make an appointment once we've gotten her entered into our system, we'll send her the documents she needs to sign, and then we'll make an in-person appointment, or she could drop them off for her to deliver. She does have to take an oath, so we are not set up for, every candidate has to take their oath of off, an oath of office when they make their declaration of candidacy, and so we can't do that remotely. We've thought about it, we're still talking about it, where we do a Zoom meeting and somebody raised their right hand, and we would administer the oath to them, but so far, we think that we're going to stay a little more old-fashioned, and I don't believe we're going to use anything like DocuSign or an electronic signature because of the oath-taking requirement.
So in terms of signature gathering for candidates, do, are they going to be required to operate with certain safety protocols like we are seeing in some of our businesses, restaurants, where pens are sterilized, there's sanitizer, there's separation from people that are being asked to sign, or how is that whole operation expected to happen?
Well, that's really going to be pretty much up to the candidate understanding, and most candidates gather their own nomination signatures. That's going to be up to the candidate being aware of the health officer's guidelines and following those as they go through that process. Of course, Michelle, as your elections official for the county will, we're not handing anything out, I don't believe, but that's a great point, Mayor Dunbar. I'll talk to our staff about it. I don't think we're handing out a protocol about how to collect nomination signatures, but that's not a bad idea, so I, we're going to put that on our next staff agenda and see. I'm not sure it's, I think it may be more between the candidate and their nominees and the health officers than us being in the middle of that, but that's, that's a great idea, and we'll, I'm going to bring that up with the staff.
It may be different if, if people were gathering signatures to put a ballot measure on, you know, for the election, where you're dealing with hundreds of thousands of signatures, we're talking about 30, so it may be easier to manage. Yes, Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things is, at Town Hall, for people to pick up their nomination papers, we are requesting an appointment be made, and we will leave a small folder of the original documents that candidates need for signature, and then we will be scheduling a follow-up Zoom appointment, and we will go over the remainder of the candidate handbook by sharing screen and going through each of the tabs. And then one of the suggestions is for people who are circulating nomination papers is, you know, maybe if you're, it depends on how you do it, if you're going door-to-door, if you're calling people ahead of time, you know, make suggestions about washing hands or have a different pen, you know, things like that, but maybe individual candidates can, can come up with a little script ahead of time for cautionary COVID measures. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just add, Mr. Tudor, when you're talking to your staff about this, I think it does make sense that there's going to be some individual responsibility by the signers to kind of care for themselves, but one thing you can't get away from is, is a paper document that's shared by 30 people plus a candidate over and over again, and if, if you have any suggestions about how that might work safely, that's just something I bring up for your consideration.
Well, it's Michelle's call, but we certainly, if it became an issue, and we were really in a terrible virus alert situation when people are circulating their nomination papers between July 13th and August 7th, we would accept single sheets with signatures on them that would be aggregated by the candidate and brought to us. They don't all have to be on the same piece of paper. That's Michelle's call, of course, but as long as the candidate printed out 30 nomination pages and had people sign, they may have to sign a lot of circulator declarations, but we would certainly accept those if it, that became necessary in this situation.
Great, thank you.
And then there was one final, oh, excuse me.
Go ahead, go ahead, yes.
Mayor Dunbar, there was just one final point. We have not heard anything about the nomination period being extended. There are very tight deadlines for this from once you finish the nomination for us to get people on the ballot and print the ballots and do all of that. So my guess is the nomination period is going to end on August 7th at Friday at 5:00 PM, unless a candidate, unless an incumbent does not file, in which case it'll be extended to Wednesday, August 12th at 5:00. it'll be extended to Wednesday, August 12th at 5:00 PM. And that's true across all of the entities. That's true of the municipalities. It's true of the school districts, and it's true of the special districts. So, my guess is August 12th, 5:00 PM, if an incumbent doesn't file, will be the deadline.
Great, thank you. I don't see any hands from the council. Are there any questions for Mr. Teeter? I don't see any. Any further presentation, John, or have you covered everything?
No, I'm done. Thanks, Michelle, for the prompt, and I will be available at any time. I'll be coming back to a council meeting if you've had further discussions on both the how to better serve the Veterans Home and the issue of the Vote Center. Michelle knows how to find me, and I will be available just as I was today.
Great, thank you very much. It's very much appreciated we're able to get in front of all these questions and give us some time to work with our colleagues at the Veterans Home Campus, definitely. Thank you very much, Mr. Teeter.
My pleasure. Stay safe and healthy.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
We're going to move ahead now to our second presentation, Item 7B, a presentation by Yountville Chamber of Commerce regarding the Up Valley Marketing Plan. I know that we have the president and CEO of the Yountville Chamber of Commerce, Whitney Diver McAvoy.
She is joining us now.
Very good. And I also know that we do have a public comment about this item. We'll get to that after we hear from Whitney.
Hi.
Hello, there you are.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. Hope you're doing well. Thank you so much for having me today. I wanted to give you a couple updates about where we're at with some of our marketing activities for the destination of Yountville. And then I also wanted to give a quick presentation about the Up Valley Marketing Campaign that we are partnering with St. Helena and Calistoga on. So, just a couple updates first is, we've decided to, last time I was on, we talked about relaunching Locals Night mid-August. We're going to put a pause on that right now, based on some of the news that's coming out of Napa County today. So, we're going to reevaluate that once we get through the next month or so, and hope to relaunch that in the fall if it's appropriate. And then you might have seen on Facebook, there have been numerous Fortune 500 companies, et cetera, that have no longer advertised on Facebook due to their hate speech policies. The Yountville Chamber has pulled all of our advertising as well from Facebook at this time. We are no longer advertising with Facebook for the month of July. This is part of a larger strategy of companies that are starting to apply pressure to Facebook. So, hopefully, we see some changes there. In the meantime, we've pivoted our advertising dollars to Google Display Network. So, we have light ads right now. By light ads, I mean a small spend at Google Display Network to promote Yountville. But other than that, that is the only advertising we have taking place right now. With that, I'll go ahead and jump into the Up Valley Marketing Campaign update. Can I share my screen, Michelle? Is that possible? Maybe.
Michelle, you're muted.
I think you can. Are you sharing it?
Oh, here we go. Thank you very much. Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, very good. Okay, wonderful. So, since we last spoke, we have moved forward with planning for the Up Valley Co-op Program or the Up Valley Marketing Campaign. When I last presented to you, we had not confirmed an agency to go with. We have vetted different options and ended up going with Maireng, who does all of the advertising for Yountville, as well as Visit Napa Valley and Visit California. In the end, this was the most cost-effective play for us, as well as the more organized and streamlined play to ensure that we remain under the umbrella of Visit Napa Valley and their overall program. I'm hopeful that this will be the beginning of a great partnership between the three Up Valley cities/town that we can continue into the future. So far, it's been a very nice working relationship, and we're very pleased with how it's turned out so far. Okay, great. So, the strategy of this program is to leverage existing Visit Napa Valley advertising efforts to drive hyper-targeted awareness to Yountville, St. Helena, and Calistoga. And I'm going to explain in English what that actually means in just a minute. So, our approach for this campaign is an itinerary-based campaign that's really promoting outdoor activities. And we are retargeting folks that have visited the Visit Napa Valley website and then funneling through to, finally, to our websites, once they've been targeted numerous times. We are working with established audiences through the Visit Napa Valley marketing spend, and capitalizing on those are the audiences that we know that are already interested in Napa Valley, and then targeting them again with our specific towns and cities. Our timing for this, and I think this is really important, so one thing I want to make super clear, our timing currently is to do this campaign from mid-August through mid-November. We'd always planned to start this a little bit later in the summer, and right now, that's our current plan. What we know about digital, the digital space, is we're able to adapt and change very quickly. We adjusted our campaign that we had originally planned to do with Facebook and moved over to Google within 24 hours. So, while mid-August is currently our plan, we are able to pivot and change that timeframe should we need to. Okay, so, this is how this works from a funnel perspective, and I think this is actually a really interesting slide to share with you. Basically, we approach this as a funnel. So, at the top, you have our mass brand awareness that we really rely heavily on Visit Napa Valley to do for us. In the past, this was a multimillion-dollar spend. It is a small million-dollar spend now, us being in COVID-19, but they really take on the broad awareness advertising for us. And then what we do then is, we have those folks interact with the Visit Napa Valley ads and website, and then we go ahead and reengage them with our Up Valley creative, and then we convert them when they come to our social media sites or our website. And so, they're seeing our destination and kind of our different marketing tactics all the way through the funnel. And how this would normally work with a business is, we would still have Visit Napa Valley up here, Yountville would be in the middle, and then at the bottom would be your hotel, or your winery, or your restaurant, and you would convert those advertising that happened in the upper funnel down here to reserving an experience. So, very similar funnel that we would normally do with our traditional advertising. Okay, so, I think this slide is really interesting. This shows you how we're going to capitalize on the Visit Napa Valley brand and partnership we have with them to really drill down into our town website. So, you'll see this first section here is the Visit Napa Valley example of a video or social ad. So, what happens is a consumer interacts with this ad, then they will be targeted with an Up Valley ad that we produce and that we have in market. Then that will lead them to engaging with additional content. Now, they may have interacted with our website or with another social asset. And what will happen is that they will engage with our landing page, where we're going to talk about our different itineraries and outdoor experiences, and then they'll see a town ad, and then finally to the town website. And this is a picture of the Yountville website. This is a picture of the Yountville ad. Now, what can be confusing is you think, oh, my gosh, the consumer has to go through one, two, three, four, five different steps to finally get to our town website. That's actually not the case. So, your consumer will visit or engage with this Visit Napa Valley piece, and they could immediately be served a town ad and come to the town website. They could also see that Up Valley ad and then go to that landing page, and then read that content and see a town ad. What's really important here, what I've learned over the last three years of doing this type of marketing, is that you need to have a lot of different content on a lot of different platforms, and it needs to be slightly different on each platform to ensure that you are engaging the customer in the different levels of the funnel. And so, while you might, they might see a social media ad or a video at the beginning, say, two days later, they see that Up Valley ad that then they click on and interact with that itinerary landing page, and they think, oh, wow, let me see this click of a Yountville link, and then I want to go to the Yountville website to learn more. So, it's a multifaceted approach, and I think we're very fortunate to be able to utilize the Visit Napa Valley assets and demographics to go ahead and capture folks that are already consumed with Visit Napa Valley marketing strategies. Okay, so, creative. So, I think this slide is also very interesting. So, this looks at consumers and how they research travel content. So, you'll see here, this 43% travel websites is still one of the largest ways that visitors or consumers consume information when doing research about a travel destination that they want to go. So, 43%, for example, are looking on yountville.com to research our destination prior to going ahead and booking an experience. That's why having a great website is so important, and making sure that we have quality content on there. And you'll see, the only thing that beats that is a personal recommendation from a family or friend, which totally makes sense. This looks at high expectations from destination websites, and this goes back to the importance of your content, making sure it's current, making sure that you have great photos, et cetera. You know, our folks are going to our website to learn more information. 43% of them are doing that. So, and they're also looking for video content. They say video is king right now, and we're definitely doing a lot with video content moving forward, which is really fantastic to tap into that new market. Okay, great. So, what does this program implications look like? So, we're taking a layered creative approach, so doing multiple channels. And it's important that we're showcasing different content experiences. For one, we're showcasing the destination, and that we're streamlining our website with quality content. Excuse me. Okay, so here are some examples. I'm not going to play these videos, but I'm happy to send this deck to you if you're interested in viewing them after this meeting. These are three different videos that are around 12 to 15 seconds that feature the destination that are showcased on social media. So, we're really working to include this type of content into our new Up Valley Marketing Campaign. So, here's what the asset plan looks like for our creative. The creative isn't done yet, so I don't have that information to show you today, but this is the overall R-Chain Creative Asset Plan. So, we'll have two written itineraries. We'll also have two social media videos, nine Facebook or Instagram, and nine Google Display Network assets. And you'll see multiple for each towns. Okay, great. So, this is what the landing page looks like, and this will live on visitnapavalley.com. So, again, capitalizing on their users and their website visitors and our media plan. This is the interesting stuff. So, target audience will continue to be that Napa Valley demographic, which is 25 to 54-year-olds with a household income of $150,000 or more. We're only focusing on drive markets, so San Francisco and Sacramento, and the Silicon Valley as well. They consider that as part of the San Francisco DMA, but just to throw that in there, they are included. And then you'll see the flight dates are mid-August through mid-November, and our budget after creative and agency fees is $64,000. And then you'll see our campaign measurement. So, CTR is the click-through rate from our ads to our landing page and the site sessions. So, how many people actually go to the site, and then the time on-site, which is TOS. So, I've kind of already gone through this, but this is just a repeat of our objective and strategies for the campaign. And then here's a breakdown of how we're actually going to utilize the different media markets. So, Facebook and Instagram, we're planning to spend $34,000 on there. Hopefully, things with Facebook get cleared up before then. But this is an example of how we drill down into that targeting and the timing and what that looks like. And you'll see, this is kind of an example of what something would look like on Facebook. Obviously, we're not San Diego, but you get the idea. And we're looking around 2.4 million impressions for that. And then Google Display Network, these are actually screenshots of our ads that have been in market in the past. The language looks a little bit different right now with COVID-19, but our budget for that is $30,000. Google Display Network is an excellent driver for click-through traffic to the website, and we're hoping to garner around 12 million impressions for that, which is incredibly high. And the look-alike targeting, so we'll go ahead and target those that have been to our website. So, for the three destinations, as well as Visit Napa Valley, and then we'll also do look-alike target audiences based on those people that have visited our sites. We can actually find people that are similar and have similar household income, as well as age demographics and likes to those folks that have visited our website. Okay, budget and timing. So, here's a look at what the spend is. So, $11,000 on production, so $5,000 on creative concepting, and then since we are doing the video, it's $5,000 for video editing. Video is fantastic, but it is expensive, but at the same time, video is king right now, so we need to make sure we play in that. And then asset development, so around $11,000. And then you see the breakdown of the different media. So, Facebook and Instagram, $34,000, and then Google Display Network, $30,000. And the benefit of going with Maireng is that the 15% commission for all ads is actually covered through our partnership with Visit Napa Valley. So, total spend for advertising for the campaign is $64,000. And just as a refresher, each town/cities contributed $25,000 for the campaign. So, this page is actually really interesting. You can see where, how we layer into the Visit Napa Valley campaign and then the Yountville campaign. So, this top line here, Phase 2, which is being slightly rolled back by Visit Napa Valley, but that is, was supposed to run kind of to the beginning of August, and then they would get into their Phase 3 campaign. I'm sure that's going to be pushed back a little bit. And then you'll see the Yountville campaign, which we started a little late in July, is really only on Google right now, but our plan is to run that through the end of November, and that includes multiple assets, which I've talked about in previous presentations for you guys. And then you can see the Up Valley campaign, how that layers in. So, it layers in really nicely, starting in mid-August and runs through mid-November. So, really capturing at the heart of both of our campaigns, when hopefully, we're seeing a very high engagement with the marketing. So, that is what that looks like, and I believe that's, oh, yeah, that's just the production timeline, but that's pretty much it. So, I will stop sharing my screen now, and happy to answer any questions that you have about the campaign or where we're at in the process.
Whitney, thank you very much. Let me start off with a question about the timing of it, and you've got your mid-August to mid-November listed in there. How does what's happened in the last 24 hours change that timeline, if it does? And part two of that is, when you get into mid-November, we're clearly getting right up into holiday season. Is there a transition from this campaign to a holiday campaign, or how is all that timing working out since we have had some changes to our economic status?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we will continue moving forward with the production of the campaign, so we are ready to go and launch mid-August if it's appropriate. So, we'll have all those assets dialed in. I think this is going to be a day-by-day, week-by-week basis, depending on where we're at. So, like I said, we can absolutely push that back. We really don't traditionally do any advertising in December because it's a very crowded space during that time. You don't have a lot of people paying attention. But we have seen much success advertising in the fall because it seeds people's brains to travel during Cabernet season. So, we, you know, we're really always trying to drive people to that January, February, March timeframe. So, we have seen success with that in the past, but like I said, I think we're really going to have to monitor it by a week to, you know, day-to-week basis, based on everything that's happening.
And I've heard you tell your championship, and actually our Yountville TID, the kind of immediacy that you were just talking about, that you can turn off delay and also turn back on literally any time it's appropriate, so that you aren't committing to, let's say, a printed magazine publication date, which you're going to run an ad, and then you don't want that ad to run because we're still in limited lockdown or something like that. So, you have maximum flexibility with your start and stop.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. Yeah, we can stop this, you know, on a dime. And that's the benefit of having everything digital nowadays. And the way most consumers consume information is digitally. So we have that capacity to, you know, literally pivot our entire plan within twenty-four hours, which we did last week. So there's a lot of benefit to having everything digital. Yes, much easier than having ads in a magazine. And I will say, you know, we don't pay for these media costs upfront. We pay for them after they run. So, you know, that's not even a worry either. So after all the ads run, then we, then we pay Maring for the advertising. So we have a benefit of, for March, we turned things off, I think on March sixteenth, and we were supposed to run that campaign through April thirtieth. So we only paid for sixteen days out of the month, rather than having to front-load that payment for the whole month of the whole six weeks. So a lot of benefits to working with Maring and to having this digital strategy.
And one last question before I see that the Vice Mayor has her hand raised also. Has there been consideration about imagery, including the safety protocols that are in place? Is that something you want to include, avoid? How have you either reached that conclusion or is that something you're continuing to monitor?
Yeah, continuing to monitor. The video is, wasn't really going to feature people so much. It's just outdoor space. So, you know, the locations that we had talked about were all outdoors and really just showing kind of the the vastness of the valley and the three different locations. So we were covered off there on that. But in terms of imagery of people, I think we definitely want to be conservative of masks and spacing, etc. And like I said, we haven't seen creative content from them. We actually are having calls with the three different jurisdictions this week with Maring to talk about that creative process. So we haven't had that call this week yet, so.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Dormin.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Donovan McAvoy. So sort of dovetailing on what the mayor said, would there, will, do you plan or could you plan a creative change? Because if we're showing beautiful outdoor from mid-August to mid-November, things kind of change of what's available or what someone might do. Is that planned into the budget, if need be?
Yeah, that's a good point. Currently, it's not planned into the budget. That five thousand covers off the assets that I mentioned in the presentation. But I think that's a valid point and something I'll speak with them when I have my call with them on Thursday is, you know, can we be mindful of this ever-changing situation? And do we have, can we be mindful of our resources and see if we can do some finagling around there? Yeah, I'll definitely bring it up. It's a great point.
Thank you. And then on the actual, your media spend is sixty-four. And then we're actually going to spend eleven thousand on the creative and the editing. But we're not having to pay the fifteen percent. So we're spending the whole seventy-five, but we're getting fifteen percent of sixty-four. We're getting eighty-four thousand worth. And we're spending seventy-four, seventy-five.
Yes, that's correct. And, you know, that's the benefit of going with an agency like Maring, who has a monthly retainer contract with Visit Napa Valley. And I need to give Visit Napa Valley and Lindsey Gallagher, their president and CEO, you know, kudos for this. Through her support, this program, she's allowed that to happen. So without her support, it wouldn't be possible. So we're very fortunate.
Excellent. Good for them, good for us. And now, if somebody just Googles vacation to Yountville, is the only way this creative is going to come up through Visit Napa Valley, through link, 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 or will it come up on its own?
Yes, great question. So as you know, Google knows everything that you were doing.
Yes, they do.
So you will have Googled Yountville and you will see some ads that will follow you, which would be our ads, Visit Napa Valley ads and the Up Valley campaign ads. It's not going to, I should have been clear about this. It's not going to say Up Valley. It's going, right, it's going to feature Yountville or St. Helena or Calistoga. So yes, you will see them. But remember, folks in Napa Valley necessarily won't see them because you're not the target audience. So, you know, you're not going to see it on your Google necessarily, but if you're somebody from Sacramento, one hundred percent absolutely, and you fall within those demographics, yes.
Thanks. And then a final question. I know you are, you've pulled the Facebook advertising through the end of July. If you make a policy decision to continue that, how do you think it will affect the touches on the ad or the people we might reach through this limited campaign?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I think something we're going to have to monitor. I think what's really unfortunate about this whole thing is Facebook is an incredible driver of clicks to our website, to many advertisers' websites. It's a very popular way that people consume information, especially about destinations. So will we be impacted by that if we continue to stay off that? Absolutely. But it just means we need to pivot to another platform. And I think luckily enough, there are plenty platforms to choose from, so we could put dollars into, you know, there are multiple options. I'm not going to suggest any because I don't want to be held to that. But there are other options out there that we could pivot those funds to that will ensure that we have just as much reach and impressions that we would have on Facebook.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I don't see any hands raised, but any other questions from the council? Seeing none. Whitney, thank you so much for the presentation and the update. We do have a public comment that was sent in by, I believe it was Pam Reeves. Michelle, could you read that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As the mayor said, this email is from Pam Reeves. "Council members, I am concerned with the concept of the chamber continuing to promote or embarking on any special promotion of Yountville when this pandemic is clearly not over. I understand that both the town and the chamber worry about the fall off of tourist activity, but to ignore the very real risk of the spread of this disease is to risk the health and well-being of every resident in the town. My point is supported by the recent mandate for state monitoring because of Napa County's rising confirmed cases. Even once the closure is lifted in Perrin's, presumably at the end of July, we should emphasize caution much more than was done upon the original reopening. Our world is different now. We cannot proceed as if things are going to snap back into old quote "normal" just because we hit some minimum numerical threshold. We have seen the results of that kind of magical thinking as the number of cases and hospitalization rise in states that reopen too quickly. I would like my local representatives to be much more prudent and adopt a more measured and incremental attitude toward opening. It is clear that the robust testing and contact tracing is not in place to facilitate any reopening of the economy at present. Until that mitigation is a reality, pushing to act quote "normal" and rush to open businesses is dangerous behavior. Health officials have pleaded with political leaders to slow or reverse openings. They point to the upward trend of infection and worry that there will be no way to stop it, even with a complete lockdown. Local businesses have not really gotten their safety, new safety procedures perfected. And when there is the pressure of numerous customers, chaos ensues. Many residents worry because of the casual and reckless behavior exhibited by visitors. In order to instill confidence and calm in both residents and visitors, opening slowly with protective systems and procedures solidly in place is imperative. More advertising to speed business recovery and draw more crowds is not a wise investment and is, in fact, reckless. More deaths and risk of lasting side effects of this virus are not acceptable trade-offs in a scenario where businesses go immediately back into maximum capacity and self-promotion mode. It is both short-sighted and not sustainable as we see the resultant need to pull back in many places that sped to reopen. The economic picture is not helped by these false starts either. Winding up and then unwinding is a waste of time, energy, and resources. We are in a new world with this virus and it will be this way for an unknowable time. We cannot presume that standard responses to these new situations are appropriate. I do not feel that the business-as-usual approach to the chamber, approach the chamber outlined in their annual report really rises to this new occasion and would actually exacerbate this health emergency. Pam Reeves, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And Whitney, I'll give you an opportunity to comment if you'd like. I think we, we pretty much covered that actually with you describing the flexibility and kind of the digital capabilities that you have to modify or delay the campaign. But if you wanted to comment, and I don't know if it's appropriate to compare to the messaging as we were coming out of the wildfires in 2017, being a little bit forward-thinking in terms of trying to get things back on track gradually. I don't know if that's a reasonable comparison or not, but I'll let you comment on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think first off, we are being really mindful of this entire situation, have been incredibly proactive. I think if anybody has questions about how we've been responding and working with our business community and our community at large, you know, please feel free to email me or call the chamber. I'm happy to meet with you anytime to discuss that. But for this campaign, as I mentioned, we are able to pivot very quickly because it's digital. And that's the benefit of this campaign. And we weren't even scheduled to start this until mid-August. So we already have a little bit of runway there. But if it's not appropriate to do that at this time, then we, we won't be doing so. So, you know, and I think in regards to Pam's comment about, you know, our plan is normal moving forward for my annual presentation. What I presented at our annual presentation was a look back on what we did for the past year. It wasn't a look ahead. And I did cover off on numerous things that we had done for COVID-19 response. So you know, we are being very mindful about our messaging and our advertising and have been incredibly active with the county and their requirements and suggestions. So hopefully that, you know, answers that. And I'm happy to go into any more detail. But yeah, we're being incredibly mindful and nimble during this terrible, terrible time.
Thank you. Michelle, do we have any other public comments?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Thank you. And I certainly recognize that this is a very different circumstance. There's no finality that we had like we did in 2017. Even post-earthquake in 2014, there was clear finality and in a clear recovery time. And we're, we're, there's no definition of recovery time right now. So there's certainly a uniqueness there, but there's also a need to kind of plan for the future. So appreciate you addressing that. Last chance for any council members, any final questions? Seeing none. Again, Whitney, thank you very much for the presentation and the information.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to move ahead. We do not have any public hearings on our agenda today, so we'll go straight to item nine of the agenda, administrative regular items. First one, item nine A, proclamation of emergency related to COVID-19. Continued proclamation twenty-twenty dash zero-one proclaiming the existence of local emergency to respond to the coronavirus, COVID-19, and extend the period of time that the Business Transitional Support Program under proclamation twenty-twenty dash zero-two is in effect to October thirty-one, twenty-twenty. So I believe that'll be you, Steve.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Council. The action before you tonight, one is required. The local jurisdiction needs to confirm, or in this case, the extension of the Declaration of Local Emergency consistent with state law regarding the Emergency Services Act. And then the second course of action before you, staff is recommending that we extend the Business Transition Support Program through October thirty-first at this time. And I'll go into a little more detail as to why we're making that recommendation. But first, as you know, the council provided support for the Business Transition Support Plan, which was that we recognize the harsh economic realities affecting our business community and we're willing to be flexible upon reopening with some of the typical use permit conditions. So we developed a program for both restaurants, tasting rooms, and retail. They're similar in their concepts. And there is an attachment, the original proclamation has all of that in there. I'm pleased to report that this has been very well received by the business community. We have over nineteen businesses. And not a surprise to me today that we've had two more applications come in that are looking for outdoor space. So what this does is it allows businesses to use adjacent patio lawn area in an effort to make up some space. It does not necessarily make them whole. It also allows for some flexibility on outdoor display in the case of retail, so people are more aware. And the town staff has been exercising a degree of flexibility with regards to temporary signs and banners. I'll make note of the Perry Lang Coqueta and Chichio signs. We have been very firm, though, on not allowing A-frames. And for those of you that are familiar with the application, it does require a written application conformance. The businesses actually would outline what they're doing, what the modifications are. And then they have to attest that they agree to abide by the industry standard and whatever conditions the town staff may impose on them for their application. And then we send them a written confirmation letter. And so this has been all done in-house principally by Sandra, myself, and Daniel Gordon. And with the council's support, we also charge, we're not charging anything for this. So and we are making a personal effort amongst staff to do weekly outreach education. I do want to indicate that the chamber has been a great partner with us in this activity, not only in helping to promote and make businesses aware of the Business Transition Support Plan. So it's been a real positive. And we're trying to use this also as an opportunity to educate. Sandra and I have went to several businesses and, you know, they were perplexed. And we said, well, all right, let's start moving tables around, looking at how you can do some things and peel back some of it. So in some ways, it's been a different environment, you know. However, I will share with you, as some of you know, based on some of the county actions, it has been expected that municipalities are going to have to up the level of enforcement activity and monitoring. As you know, the county has a hotline and we are obligated by our attestation towards our compliance to have programs in place. So we do have an affirmative obligation to share complaints, review them, monitor, and then we work on education. We take our similar approach that we do with all code enforcement, which is education outreach. So anyway, the action before you tonight is, we're recommending extending through October thirty-first for a couple reasons. One, we're trying to, we've had a level of success and support from the business community, and we've granted them originally sixty days. Many of them had different starting points, with some actually coming very close to having been in place now sixty days, while others are actually just starting and just sending them in. So looking at the summer schedule, trying to manage staff impacts and focus on positive business outreach, we just felt that extending the program at this time through the summer, fall made the most sense, both to support the businesses, so they had some continuity in long-range planning and making the effort, but also from a staff resource and delivery standpoint. So that's our basis behind that. Certainly, it's the council's prerogative to change the date or look at something, but that is our staff recommendation for that reason. And Sandra and I are here, as well as Gary, if there may be any questions on application or how it's been received.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Questions from the council? Vice Mayor Dormin.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Rogers. So our current, the first part of it is our just emergency declaration. As I understand it, that occurs somewhere in the near future and we will, by action tonight, likely move to extend it by sixty days, which will push it into the early part of September. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then this program, the transition program, you are, staff is recommending it goes till October thirty-first. And let's say that sometime between September seventh and October thirty-first. And let's say that sometime between September 7th and October 31st, we decide we don't have to have an emergency proclamation in place anymore. Do the businesses still get this transition opportunity through October 31st?
We're asking for a date specific. So this is actually, at this point, the council is now providing the direction for this. So the date would be the date that you extended through.
Okay.
Through the date of the governor's extension or the, I mean, that is certainly one thing you could do is you could tie it through the governor's order or the Napa County Health Order. There's another common sense reason. I think most of you are familiar with our weather. Um, October, November starts transitioning to a, a rainy fall season. So again, that all leads into those. But, but we are recommending a, a more date, longer-term date, but those would certainly be options the council could consider.
Uh, and Vice Mayor, let me just add very quickly before you continue. If you look at the, uh, uh, paragraph three of the proclamation, it does call out, because this was a question I was waiting to ask and you asked it first. Uh, the program shall remain enforced and effective unless modified or rescinded and only for so long as the proclaimed local emergency is in effect. So if conditions were to dramatically change, it would, it could potentially end prior to the date certain that Steve is proposing.
That is correct. I'm, I'm just looking at the information that we know right now. I'm not sensing that.
That's unlikely.
I, I had misunderstood you, Mr. Rogers. I apologize for that. So thank you, Mayor. Um, so then my other thing is kind of on the monitoring and enforcement. I'm looking now at the application, um, and it talks about the town may revoke temporary approval for any restaurant or whatever businesses failing to abide by program requirements and certain other things. Is there any due process associated with that? Or if we feel we have a, either a consistent offender or we have one really egregious offense, uh, can we then just say, I'm sorry, you are no longer entitled to the benefits of this program?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and also let me add again, uh, here, Napa County has put together, uh, an enforcement task force. And there is a, a process involved there about education, uh, potential, uh, uh, violation. What's the word I'm looking for? Not a ticket, but a, um, some type of, um.
Administrative citation.
There we go. Administrative citation and potentially fine and even greater discipline if repeat or egregious offenses are identified. So, um, all, the entire county, all the jurisdictions within it have that additional layer of oversight and, um, monitoring.
It's also important to recognize, and, and Gary can probably expand, but this is not, this is something we're allowing them to do and we've structured the language very clearly so that it is, it's not a right that they have. We are allowing them, given the emergency circumstances, and they always will, um, the default and, and revoke back to their standard conditional use permit. So this is a, a special benefit that the town is extending. Not a right nor a continuing obligation of the town to do so.
And what I would add to that is unless it was a rescission of the entire program, either because the emergency ended or because the council decided to stop the program, unless it was that, if there was an individual revocation of a program, there would be some due process and notice required for that. And we would work with whatever the particular circumstance is and provide that notice to that.
Yes, and I think that's a, a great way. We typically, y- you know, right now, we're, we do our education. We do it in a written format so that we have a record to establish. And then as Gary outlines, we would send them a letter saying this is our intention. Here's the process. You know, and the goal would always be that we got compliance rather than focusing on the revocation.
Okay, and, and thank you, Mr. Bill. That's a good clarification. So it could not be just at a staff level saying you've, we've tried in education and now we have to do enforcement in a, in this way.
Uh, so that would be a staff decision on enforcement and compliance.
So the due process would come at the staff level?
Yeah, like any other code enforcement matter. Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Then, um, I see also on the application, it says, please provide, describe the proposed additional seating or other arrangements for your business. And I'm assuming this is where some of the signage comes in. Um, is that, whatever these other arrangements are, is that totally in staff's discretion?
Yes, I mean, what I'm going to say here is the other arrangements have a whole lot to do more with what the site layout, if they're modifying, if they need, uh, consideration for, from different use permit conditions. So, um, we are approving no additional specific, additional signage. And in fact, we've been very clear that A-frames are not allowed.
Well.
Have not, and I'll be very clear, we haven't approved any signs or additional signs. However, we have not enforced and took action against businesses, including Chichio's, Perry Lang's and Coqueta and, um, Bottega that have installed signs. Those are not, they were not technically part of their, um, Business Transition Support Application.
Okay, so the, the, um, the signs that I see stuck in the ground, and I'm gonna, just because I see it every day, Coqueta, Bottega, that is not, has not been approved. It's simply we have deferred at this time enforcement.
Correct. And what I would also say is they started off with three A-frames and we enforced the no A-frames. And then, uh, this again is an area where we're using, and I'll, I'll take responsibility or blame, but I'm using a little bit of liberty to try to recognize that there are some environments that we're trying to be supportive of jump-starting. Again, if the council wants us to, to completely allow no additional signs and banners, the reference in the staff report was there so that you can provide direction. Otherwise, we are trying to work within a flexible framework, um, for those that are doing something. But A-frames are not permitted. Uh, we were on an extended phone call with some of the Chamber tasting rooms and explained that that is not something that we're based on current council policy and direction. Uh, many of you may remember that the town had an A-frame situation and it led to the creation of the weight finding signage program. The town council committed a significant amount of money to put the infrastructure in. And I'm going to go probably eight or nine years ago and, and one of those conditions was that A-frames wouldn't be permitted. And exchange businesses could put their, uh, identification on the weight finding signage program. Again, those are all council policy and prerogatives. Um, staff is willing to modify it based on the direction that the council provides. But I want to be really clear, we are not waiving, we are not allowing or permitting any additional signs. And any of this is simply using a little bit of flexibility during this emergency situation. It is not a sanction, nor should any business assume that they're going to get to keep the sign.
Thank you. And what I, uh, intend as a final question is, I think in the, um, staff report, you mentioned that, uh, Bouchon Restaurant, you expected an application and for outdoor dining. Uh, when I was out this weekend, it appears to me that application has been processed through staff because they were doing outdoor dining. And I think the staff report said part of that would be management of the Bouchon Bakery line. Um, I don't want to get into the specifics of the case. I just want to know, was that handled as part of the application? And was it under this sort of open piece of, uh, or other arrangements?
I'm not, I, I don't understand your other arrangements, but it was one of the.
Well, that's, that, it says, please describe.
One of the conditions that we have in their application.
Is it says they will manage the bakery line? So we have that kind of flexibility on what we require?
It's in the conditions that we have put in there specific. Uh, for example, we've also, based on experience, worked with ad hoc and they've agreed to move the, um, pickup point a little further into the driveway. So I mean, there's a lot of variables and I'm going to be very honest, we're trying to be flexible, work with the businesses based on what we see. Another example of flexibility is modifying the R and D transition support to allow for two, um, drop-off spots in their own parking lot. So some of these are evolving.
Okay, thank you.
That would also include where we have allowed signage for takeout and delivery that is displacing a couple of parking spaces. Is that correct, Steve? That's your discretion on the particular circumstances for a particular business?
When this required a public parking space, we tried to include it in the conditions of the application. Correct.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Durham, your blue hand has been raised for a while.
Actually, it was answered. It was more about the proposed written plan and how that modifies and changes as day by day the COVID changes. And it sounds like as the town manager stated, they're doing things daily, um, and interacting with the businesses daily. So that was my, uh, main concern.
I think a great illustration is, is, you know, the Bouchon Bakery line, we've worked with the TKRG group. We've tried a couple of different things. Um, they didn't like a few things that we initially did. They came back with a better response plan that better fit theirs. They've modified their signage. And if you went out today, you'll find that they're doing some things different today than they did two days ago. Um, and, and that's just, I think, our current reality. Um, the intent of this program from a staff standpoint and with the council's support when we put this together was how not to be that overly bureaucratic local government, but yet how to, how to be helpful while maintaining the important things and letting them, I mean, I want to be really clear. Everybody knows what they're getting now under this program is not something they get to keep. And we've been really clear in the application forms and material, um, because some of the businesses, um, I'm going to be very honest with you. You know, we've probably dealt with twenty requests for A-frames. No, A-frames are not part of the program. You know, here's what we can do. It's disappointing to Sandra and I. I should probably let her share her own disappointment. But we've explained to some people, you can do a temporary banner. You can do sales. There's things that we have in our current ordinances for sixty days that are appropriate. We've had people say, no, if I can't do an A-frame, I don't want it. Um, but we are trying to give them tools and we also are trying to be flexible, recognizing the uniqueness of the situation with the belief that, you know, we want to try to be supportive and, and, and get the economy and our community moving and the employment in a measured, safe way as well.
Uh, Steve or Gary, uh, I have a question for you as it relates to what's just happened in the last twenty-four hours in Napa County with the governor's, uh, mandatory rollback of some, uh, inside activity. Do we need language in these, um, in this proclamation that recognizes the priority that state, um, orders have so that it's very clear that if we say you can have outdoor, um, wine tasting, outdoor dining, outdoor whatever, and then that changes at the state level, I, I don't want somebody to think, well, the town says we can do this.
Correct.
Is it already clear enough in there?
The manager accounted for this actually in the, um, regulations themselves. So if you turn to the actual body of the regulations, one of the requirements to be eligible is that you have to apply with, you have to comply with all other federal, state and local laws and regulations. So as the program goes forward, that's a basis to revoke and rescind. So if that really changed dramatically, the town could revoke the whole program. And if it changed in a more modified sense, so if there was a county health order or the governor issued an executive order to change some portion of the program, they would still be required to comply with that to continue.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. Uh, I don't see any other hands from the council. Uh, Michelle, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we do. We have one letter of support from Whitney Diver McAvoy on behalf of a variety of businesses. Um, Mayor Dunbar and council members, I am writing in support of extending the Yountville Transitional Support Program to October 31st, 2020. I would first like to thank town staff and council for their proactive and innovative approach to the transitional support program. Town council approved this program on April 7th. Yountville was the first to approve such a program in Napa County. Numerous cities have now adopted similar programs based on Yountville's template. Overall, this program has been a great success. A total of nineteen businesses have participated, including TKRG Properties. This program has allowed our businesses to utilize outdoor space and encourage outdoor dining, tasting or shopping. Many visitors and locals prefer to sit outside. Given the probability, Napa County will have to shut down indoor dining and indoor tastings beginning on July 9th. It is vital to our business community. We extend the deadline of this program until October 31st. Continuing this program shows the town's commitment to utilizing outdoor space in support of the economic vitality of Yountville. Below are comments of support from businesses participating in the program. Number one, outside seating will continue to be the lifeblood of Coqueta. And hopefully we make Yountville even more attractive for locals and visitors who want to enjoy a safe dining experience. David O'Malley, Coqueta. Number two, for Senses, we now have a place to feature our quote sale items and allow shoppers to browse comfortably outside before coming into the store. Many people see this as a universal sign that we are open and make coming into the stores less intimidating. The JCB Salon has been using the courtyard in between Senses and the JCB Lounge, and that has been a tremendous help. Tasters and tourists are still bringing small children and being able to offer the tasting experience outside is great for the family and preferred by the indoor guests. It's also become obvious as we reopen. Many people don't understand how viruses are transmitted and feel the outdoor tables are safer and more comfortable than sitting indoors. Ashley Amaral, JCB Tasting Salon and Senses. Number three, the patio dine-out program was very successful for both the community and hotel guests. Due to the ability of having a dining option in an open-air environment, we were able to sell more room nights to the guests. I do not think many of the guests would have come to visit if we do not have a dining option. The patio dining is so spacious to allow social distancing, which made our guests feel safe and healthy. Celeshi, The Estate Yountville slash Perry Langs. Number four, having our outdoor tastings has been very helpful with guests that feel more comfortable being outside in the fresh air as to, as opposed to being indoors. It's also allowed us to capture some new guests that have been walking by and only want to have a glass of wine. We've had several guests book a tasting for the next day. It has helped with our sales. Bill Miller, handwritten wines. Uh, we ask for your support in continuing the transitional support program until October 31st, 2020. Lastly, the staff report references signage, signage as part of the considerations. The chambers, Chamber strongly supports the council considering freestanding or A-frame signage for our businesses as part of the transitional support program. Nearly every business in town has voiced the need for additional signing, signage during this difficult time. The Chamber is currently working with town staff on signage adjustments as part of the updated general plan ordinances and hopes to share more long-term ideas in the coming months. Thank you for your consideration. Again, Whitney Diver McAvoy, President and CEO, Yountville Chamber of Commerce.
And then that's, that's it for public comment?
That is it, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, so, uh, council, uh, I don't see any hands raised for questions, uh, discussion on this item? Yes, Michelle?
Um, Councilmember Durham just put up his hand.
Yes, Councilmember Durham.
Let, uh, Michelle finish your, finish your thought. I want to comment, I want to ask something after you're done. It's fine, please.
I think she is. She was just helping me see your, see your, uh.
Thank you, thank you. I, I'm confused. I, I get, personally, I'm confused. So I need a further, uh, I, the, the A-frames are not allowed. Can, can, can someone tell me why they should be allowed? What, what purpose, what purpose would they serve in our community?
Well, first of all, I want to be very clear, A-frames are not part of the program. The comment was that they would like to see them included in the program. Staff is not recommending inclusion of the A-frames. They were not a part of the initial program. We're not recommending that they be a part of this program at this point in time.
And I understand that completely. I'm trying to understand what benefit they would bring to the businesses in the community above and beyond what the town staff has already implemented.
I think a good example would be Councilmember Durham, uh, something like. I think a good example would be Councilmember Durham, something like a Heron House where there is not a street frontage. They may, they may want additional signage on the sidewalk that helps identify that they may be having tastings. Now those tastings would have to be outdoors and they'd have to be presenting a plan to do that. I think it's boiling down to, they want more signage on the street for pedestrians to see. And I think what Steve and Sandra have been identifying is we have been pretty regimented about not cluttering the right of way on the sidewalks, basically. And we've had some flexibility where it's not a sidewalk blockage problem like the Coqueta, like the Perry Lang signage that Steve alluded to earlier.
As a general rule, all of the businesses, if given a choice, would like more signage.
Right. Other questions from council? I don't see any other hands raised. If not, is there any further discussion or is there a motion on this item? I see council member, or Vice Mayor Dorman first.
Thank you. And I, I do actually have just some discussion. I I like the program a lot. I'm actually not wild about going through October 31st, but not a deal breaker for me. I do feel very strongly about the sign issues. I think I don't want any A-frames. I think we stick with that. And as far as the Coqueta, Bottega signs. I understand Bottega. I understand Perry Lang. They are hidden. I don't really understand that they have been able to, apparently, it looks like to me in, in Bottega's situation poke a sign out that we did not permit or allow and let it live there. Coqueta, I don't think should be allowed any signage under this program because it's on the street front. And that's sort of where I draw the line on a Heron House. I did happen in there. Excuse me. They did ask me about signage. And I, because of Coqueta and Perry Lang. And that makes sense to me. If we have a business that's hidden, then let's let them have a banner or some kind of a sign. But as far as a business who's already on the street, I don't see why we need to allow additional signage because we started this in March. We go through October. I know we all sit here and we all say this is not going to be permanent. This is just transition. Six months is a long time. And if you're putting up signs everywhere or whatever you're doing everywhere, if you have outside seating, it gets to be, well, why would we ever change it? And I'm, I understand the slippery slope is not always the convincing or a great argument, but I just will say six months is a long time. And I think we need to be really judicious in what we allow and what we don't while still helping our businesses to get what they need.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham?
Thank you. And I, I want to add another conversation to this, too, is that I, I as the parking discussion is always had at every single meeting, I think we need to have it again here. And the, the interesting thing is that it is mid-July. This has been going on since March 20th. And if we're lucky, we might be not discussing this in July of 2021. I mean, I, I understand six months is a long time, but I have a feeling we're going to be talking about this for a year. And we're still going to be updating and extending this, this program. My thought is, I really think beyond A-frames is that we need to seriously consider moving forward, especially now that we're getting shut down again for indoor seedings. It's giving up some parking spaces for the restaurants to utilize for outdoor dining. It's being done in so many different places and Yountville, Yountville works perfectly for it. So I I would like it to be considered today, or I would at least like it to be considered with the staff as they move forward for these restaurants. I don't, you know, there was some discussion at the last speaker that, you know, we're moving forward as business as usual. If anybody thinks this is business as usual, I, I don't understand at all. This is not business as usual. We need to, we need to be adaptable. We need to be flexible. And I believe this town really has been. But I also believe that parking, giving up some parking spaces for these businesses, especially the restaurants to utilize some of their outdoor parking spaces is definitely something that should be utilized as well.
Member Durham, if I could.
Yeah.
Staff has approved the two spaces at Chichio to allow them to have out. The challenge we have with our parking spaces is we have very few restaurants that actually sit on parts of Washington that have immediate adjacent parking. But that has been something that we've actually, in the case of Chichio's, it's there. We have approved it. So I want you to, it is part of our, it is part of the platform of ideas, but it's also, in talking to some businesses, they also have to make sure that they have the staff support structure and mechanism to do it. So, but unfortunately, for most of us on Washington Street, we don't have a lot of parking immediately adjacent to where the restaurants are.
Let's, the, the main, the main landlord in town does. So I just, and as you said, you guys are being flexible. You're, you're doing these things, so that's fine. I just want to ensure that you continue to, and that, we always talk about parking, so I, I really think that maybe ad hoc, maybe parts of R&amp;D, maybe parts of Bouchon. Go into their parking lot for, for a different experience. We're seeing it all over California. We're seeing it all over.
Conversations.
Good, good.
R&amp;D, what I will say is we encourage them to start first with their Basque. And then looking at, but we have had, as it relates to the Bouchon situation, we have had that conversation with TKRG personnel as to the parking there.
Good, good. And I just, and that's exactly what I appreciate here, is that's why I want to bring it up. And that's, that's my point, too, about the, the October date. I have no problem if it's through the end of the year. We're, we're going to be talking about this again. It's going to be another agenda item that we're going to have to come up and extend this. Obviously, the staff and the town has done, I, I think a great job up to this point. And I will put the mayor and the vice mayor into that category as well with their work on the county COVID compliance group. Everybody's really pulling together. So I have complete staff. I have complete trust in the staff and what we've been doing thus far, and I'm fine with the dates as well.
And I, and I'll just point out also, I was double checking, trying to find the exact language, but in the program, it already does recognize if business has property on the same parcel available, they can expand to that. So if there is parking, as you're identifying, if it's the estate Yountville, for example, it's on the same parcel. So there is the possibility of expansion. It would not be the same thing as putting tables and chairs in a parking stall on Washington Street across the sidewalk from
Exactly.
from a restaurant. That, that would be a very different dynamic.
And that's why.
The Group OKO Holo Group has been approved to use the front lawn area. It's at their discretion as to whether they choose to do so. And that lawn area could serve both Bottega and/or Coqueta. So I mean, a-again, I think, I'm anticipating that we're going to see in the next week, as this settles in, there'll be some folks come talk to us about one, modifying or changing some of the things that we're doing, and we'll take a look at it.
And, and one of the other things about the same parcel component is the alcohol beverage control license issue. We've, I've been hearing in other counties, other cities in the Bay Area, they're having problems getting approval from ABC when you're crossing over public rights of way. And I don't know if Gary has any need to comment on that, but we have avoided that complication because we have put in the program, you need to be on the same parcel. And so there hasn't been the same kind of conflict with getting the, the state license approvals. Councilmember Mueller?
I just wanted to start by commenting on the A-frames. We do not need A-frames. I think they're hazard. They're ugly. They fall over. And I'm, it's just just kind of a quick fix. These businesses need to be a little more creative. We've got a lot of opportunities for them, but A-frames are not on my A-ok list. I, I think definitely go through Halloween. I won't even be able to celebrate Halloween probably this year. This is gonna, the cavalry's not coming tomorrow. So I think it makes a lot of sense to extend it at least that far. And I think the, the businesses just because they didn't all start at the same time, I think we should start some end dates because I think those are going to be moving as we move forward, too. So I, I have no problem with that. So somebody who hasn't got their 60 days in just because they started late, well, we started the program, they just didn't want to join in. So I, I think getting it fixed now makes a lot of sense. And thanks for working with all these businesses. I think that people are going to get a lot more creative because you know, three bistro tables in front of someplace like Chichio's is not going to be able to keep them in business. So especially with indoor dining closed, at least for now. So there's going to be a lot of creative things. So thanks to the staff for dealing with it and trying to get things enforced and challenging times. I think you're doing a great job with and that we're dealt with the moment.
I wanted to add a question, either Steve or Gary. We've seen a lot of creativity online with virtual tastings, in particular, mainly this has been around wine tastings, but, but we might start to see some restaurant activity where they want to do cooking demonstrations virtually online. Those might happen after hours that are in a permit. Do we need to worry about something like that? If it's not open to the public, can we allow that kind of activity in a kitchen, for example, or for a virtual tasting, as long as they're not open to the public?
I, I'd have to see more, Mayor, but my sense is if they're not open to the public and they're doing something, that's just like if they're cleaning late at night and they have a crew. But the other answer is if they wanted to be really conservative and safe, then that's one of those things we would put in the application amongst other considerations. And we would include the language that they're allowed to do that.
Is that a head nod, Gary?
Yeah, I agree. I think the hours of operation are for open to the public. And in this case, if they're streaming it out, outside of the town's boundaries and and they're in the, in the business doing nothing else, I think that's probably allowed.
And I think that with our restaurant hours, I, I can't imagine there's really going to be a cooking class at midnight or even 10 o'clock, but it's really more about the tastings because there have been some real creative virtual tastings that have happened after that business may be closed at a 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock. So I like, as long as like we're not having noise complaints, it's not like they can then violate the noise ordinances, but it does allow for some additional flexibility for that, that creativity that's happening. Okay, great. Any, I don't see any other questions. So is there a motion on this item?
I'd be happy to.
Hold on a second. I think Councilmember Dornbecker is trying to find the no mute button.
I am. I had not had the opportunity to weigh in. But I think that as long as there are a couple of restaurants in town that do have the, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. As long as there are a couple of restaurants that do have the signs that we don't like out. I, I don't know how we can deprive everyone of having them unless it is that if it's on their own property, they can have it, they just can't have it in the right of way. Is that correct?
I think Steve is, I think Steve has allowed the flexibility for Perry Langs in particular. I don't know about Coqueta being the same way, but because they are set back off of the street and it it's just an additional signage, that may be something that we decide we're not comfortable with. But that's not an A-frame. It's not sitting on the sidewalk. Steve, if you have drawn a distinction as to why those two particular signs are allowed where others may not be.
No, I want to go back to what I said earlier. The town has not allowed those signs. We have not taken action to remove those signs.
Well, but let's, let's be clear about that, Steve. We're, we're not, we're now going to say, we're going to look the other way. And we're going to see 16 A-frames on the sidewalk.
No, absolutely. What we have tried, what I'm trying to say is we've been flexible with those signs or if somebody, for example, JCB Senses, we offered a sale banner. The Bouchon has a banner up. There's a few places. So we're trying to be within the spirit of that flexibility. And, and yes, I, I would say the, the Perry Lang sign appeared without any awareness. And then the, what happened next was A-frames for Coqueta and Bottega. And we told them no, and then they modeled the Perry Lang sign.
Okay.
Comment that was made is that right now, with the exception of the Coqueta element, both of those, and I'm, I think the vice mayor's comment about Heron House or K-Laz. I think, you know, if the guidance that I'm hearing from you all is only those that are not accessible from the street, then that can be guidance that we use in, 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 in going forward with those.
Okay. And then I do think that we are in the, really in the early stages, I'm sorry to have to say, of this pandemic. And so I think going through the end of October is optimistic. I hope that I'm, I hope that I'm wrong. I hope that we don't have to extend this again, but I believe we will and I support extending it because the, the, the businesses in town, although I, it did worry me when the 19 counties around us were closed and, you know, it was party time in Napa County. So that, that concerns me, but as long as we're on the same page, I think that this whole area has to be really on the same page. We can't afford to have big crowds of people coming. We don't want to, you know, take the advice of the, the scientists and the doctors. Anyway, I support this ordinance. I mean, adopting this resolution.
Thank you. One last thing, I think we've talked the signs enough, but I want to clarify also Perry Langs is a very unique situation because they changed their, their operation. And so they went from a full-service steakhouse to a barbecue operation. I think there was some, some branding that was desired to make that explanation because they were in limited capacity. That was, I think, a unique situation where all of our other businesses have continued to operate while limited, and in some cases only takeaway. That was a, a whole different experience that they were trying to promote. So. But I'll, Councilmember Mueller, I think you were about to speak up. Hopefully that was for a motion.
Uh, yes, it is a motion and my motion is going to include no A-frames. So that's what we're voting on. So I will move that we approve proclamation number 2020-01. Amended proclamation of the Director of Emergency Services of the town of Yountville, State of California, proclaiming the existence of a local emergency to respond to the coronavirus, COVID-19, and adopting rules and regulations related thereto.
Is there a second?
A second.
So a motion, Councilmember Mueller, second. Councilmember Durham, Vice Mayor, you have a question?
And mute.
Thank you. Since we have a motion and a second, I'd like to propose an amendment, a friendly amendment. Since it's no A-frames, I'd like to say no A-frames and no signage for businesses who are already street-facing. We, we, we restrict the extra signage to businesses who do not have street front.
And I, I just don't really want to get that complicated myself. Gary?
Yeah, I just, I just want to add in, so the current municipal code allows signs under certain circumstances. All of those signs would still be allowed under your proposed friendly amendment. If I understand it correctly, you're saying that no signs that wouldn't otherwise be allowed should be, should be allowed under the program. Is that correct?
No sign other than as we already allow should be allowed for businesses who are, who have street-facing frontage.
To, to try to clarify, you want the Coqueta and Perry Lang signs removed?
No, because they, to me, they do not have, Coqueta does. So Coqueta would be out under what I'm proposing, Bottega would be able to have a sign, and Perry Lang would be able to have a sign, Heron House, businesses that don't front on the street, a street.
But Councilmember Mueller, you were saying that you were not necessarily interested in that amendment?
It, it's a little subjective, you know, I know I've seen, and I, I just think it's difficult to enforce. I understand what you're saying and I think the staff here is what you're saying, and it's up to their discretion. So I do believe they are taking your comments seriously, but I just wanted to kind of close off the, the A-frame. I know, you know, I've seen, it's almost like one of those car wash things when they're trying to sell pizzas in front of Chichio's. It's like, is that a sign, is that not a sign, is it street front, fronting? So it's not that I don't disagree, but I think keeping it simple for the staff, that no A-frames, and I think they've heard our discussion.
There is no mention of signage to be added, so if you're just, if you are just taking a motion to accept, all we're talking about is extending the deadline, that's all we're talking about.
But I wanted to add no A-frames because that's not in either one of these approvals.
They're, they're not being proposed.
Okay, staff isn't proposing and we're not agreeing, then I'll take that off the motion and just leave my motion removing the A-frame and all signage discussion.
So Steve, just to be clear, all you're asking for is, is extension of the existing program, and the existing program does not allow any kind of A-frame signage, correct?
That is correct, and if there were any other modifications or changes to the program the council wanted.
But I'm not hearing any desired changes, so all we're hearing is an agreement on extending the deadline. Councilmember Mueller, is that your, can you just clarify again that that's your motion?
That is my motion.
Councilmember Durham, is that your second? So this is to just continue the existing program to the new date? Okay, so we have that motion and a second. Councilmember Mueller, motion. Councilmember Durham, second. Michelle, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember Durham?
Yes.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes, so that passes unanimously, thank you.
Would you like a second motion, Mayor?
For the twenty twenty dash oh two?
Yes.
No, no, you, you don't need to, we're extending the existing one.
Yeah.
Okay, so this one goes along with the first one?
Correct.
All right, got it. All right, done.
Thank you. We're gonna move on now to item nine B, Washington Park Main Replacement Project. Discussion and possible direction to staff regarding inter-fund loan from the drought water reserve fund fifty-seven to the water capital improvement fund sixty to cover costs of the emergency Washington Park Main Replacement Project WA dash zero zero one six.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mayor and council members. This discussion is about funding for the emergency Washington Park Main Water Replacement Project. As you all know, this section of the water system is aging prematurely and needs to be repaired prior to the end of its useful life and really prior to when the town anticipated needing to have full funding available for this replacement. Unfortunately, the water capital fund does not have the available fund balance to cover the cost of this major project. In the budget workshop back in May, the town council directed staff to develop some scenarios for an inter-fund loan from the drought reserve, drought water reserve fund to the water capital improvement fund. The reason that that was the logical place to look for funding options first is because it stays within the water enterprise funds. So included with this staff report are quite a few options for the terms of the loan, ranging from five years to ten years for repayment with different dollar amounts and interest rates. So our recommended loan options fall between the five-year and seven-year repayment terms with an interest rate of one point five percent. When determining these recommendations, we really focused on the annual payment amount, which drove us to the longer term for the loan. The, the water fund, the water capital fund does not bring in a significant enough revenue to cover a higher annual payment that would allow the loan to be paid off quicker. And with the water operating fund not being able to be a reliable source of contribution towards the loan repayment because of increased water purchase costs, we aim to keep the annual payment on the lower end. So staff is seeking further guidance from the council as far as what elements you all agree would be appropriate to include in the inter-fund loan agreement as far as the loan amount, the repayment term, and the interest rate so that we could finalize a loan agreement to bring back to you for approval. Steve, unless you have something to add on that, I think we could open for questions and discussion?
Yes, this is really pretty straightforward based on the framework. I do, I will point out, a question was asked, did we look at other alternative financing mechanisms? And what I do want to let you know is, the short answer is yes. As you may recall, when we did the refinancing earlier, we did speak with our financial advisor. I also want to remind you that a, an external loan or COP would also have the fixed cost of issuance. So when we looked at it, that factor, so we would have had a thirty to forty thousand dollar cost, and it was pointed out by our financial advisor that our, our water fund is really not that attractive as an investment instrument to potential lenders, and we would face a, a higher interest rate because of that. So really, his comment to us was, why would you look someplace else when you have an alternative that seems to make sense? But I do want to let you know that we did do that, and there are some legitimate factors. I also want to be really clear, when we talk about the hundred and fifty thousand payment roughly, if you recall, in the, the current five-year rate cycle, we had estimated about a hundred and fifty thousand a year building up for water line replacement. So that's the revenue that Cecilia is talking about that, you know, now we're, we're spending all of that and then into the next rate cycle. So unfortunately, I know that some of the council had expressed a optimism that perhaps we would be closer to a five-year. I, I've got to be honest, and unless the environment, the bid environment comes back really, really good, I don't think we're going to be in a five-year. In fact, I'm probably gonna go out on a limb here and say, when you get the real numbers back, it's gonna be closer to that ten-year. But that's the other thing, is the final loan amount will actually be what it takes to pay for the, the construction and a, a probably a ten or fifteen percent contingency.
Thank you, and thank you for the report, Cecilia. Questions from council? Councilmember Durham?
Thank you. Have we, so besides the subsidy, the subsidy that we pulled out recently when we redid the, when we redid the water rates, when was the last time we drew from Fund Fifty-seven?
Um, actually, that's the first time, oh, I'm saying.
Go ahead, Steve.
That's the first time that the council has ever drew down from the drought reserve fund.
And what's the current balance of Fund Fifty-seven?
It's going to, it's estimated to end fiscal year nineteen twenty, once the year is closed at about one point nine three million.
And then, how much, how much did the council pull to subsidize water when we pulled money from there?
Two hundred thousand.
What were the loan and term payments on that to be paid back to the drought fund?
That was not a loan, that was a, a one-time transfer contribution, so that will not be paid back.
So why would we, if we subsidized water for the community, why would we not treat this inter-transfer the same way with the intent of paying it back but without the interest?
I, I think that that is an option possibly that the council could, could decide on. I think that Gatsby, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, does encourage charging interest and, and structuring it as a loan just to make it more official and discourage kind of just moving money around here and there and, and not having a plan for replenishing. But Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that it, it could be an option that you decide to use it and not pay it back or maybe use a portion and pay back a portion?
It is certainly a council prerogative, but the prior council direction, and I'm going to go back because the, the two hundred thousand dollar subsidy was not an, an easy discussion when it was had and a lot of, there was considerable council angst that the, you know, whether that should have occurred at that approach, but it's certainly the council's prerogative, the same way the rate, the interest rate, you know, we proposed one and one and a half percent, and again, this is your business enterprise operation. The fact that it is inside the water fund certainly makes it more flexible, but that's a, a council policy prerogative.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilmember Mueller?
So my questions currently were, are we in year four of five in our rate model for water rates? Is that where we are?
I think we're in three, three of them.
We're in year three, all right, thank you. Also, within that rate model, we set some of the, the cost and the projections, but didn't we also allow, or in, in case, for example, like water costs from the veterans' home went a lot higher, that we could change the rates by, I can't remember, a, a percentage or two during that five-year cycle?
Correct, Councilmember Mueller, what you're referring to is what is known as the pass-through provision, and it applies only to the cost of water purchase that would exceed the amount that was actually put in the modeling projection. It does not apply to capital.
All right, so that's what I was going to suggest, so we're only here.
Well, you do have a situation where you have spent five hundred thousand more than you anticipated on water because of the emergency purchase of water.
Right, have we adjusted the rates using that, what, what's that called again? We're, we're calling it something else and another.
Well, it's the pass-through provision.
The pass-through, okay.
You have, the council, in my time here, has never utilized the pass-through provision.
Okay, well, it sure seems like if water is costing us more and we have a pass-through provision, that that should be going into the rates, but that's a different subject, I'm not gonna go there now. I was just trying to see if that would be an option. Generally, this needs to get paid for, in my opinion, through the rates, but it looks like we're not going to be able to redo the rates for two more years. But even with that said, so two years from now, we can start increasing the rates to kind of cover some of this cost and perhaps pay this back earlier, wouldn't that be a possibility?
That's indeed a possibility. I, I, what I would say going forward is, this becomes, you have to factor in the debt in the next rate cycle at a minimum level. So you have to make your payment stream, and that's why it's important that it be structured as a formal loan and a debt and not just drawn down. Again, in theory, if the council wanted to just draw down the drought emergency reserve fund completely, you have the ability to do that. So I want to be really clear in terms of what your options are, but prior council policy and direction has not been to do that. It has, it has been to use limited and then to structure and also the, it also, if you recall, probably seven, maybe it was twenty eleven, we have a policy that we no longer have the general fund subsidize the water fund as well.
Right, right. I only want to have that discussion again. So my, my general opinion is, I think seventy years seems reasonable. The interest rate, interest rates are low, the difference between two point one and one point five is fine, but, and we will, I'm planning when we redo the rates, two years from now, revisiting this loan. So let's make sure that we can pay ourselves back perhaps earlier through the rates when we change them in two years.
So, so I want to make sure that we stay on point with what we're talking about here and don't get into a rate restructuring conversation, but the only question I would ask about that is, if it's, could money be repaid into this fund, either Cecilia or Steve, or by rate money? Or is it a color of money that could not be used for that purpose, do we know?
Well, let me be really clear, all of your enterprise fund is ratepayer money, so we, you know.
So that's a yes, it could be. Okay, but I do want to make sure that we stay on target with what we're dealing with here is the, basically, I think it comes down to whether we charge ourselves interest or not. I think we've identified that you've found the best loan mechanism probably, but are we gonna charge interest from one fund to another, maybe is the, the outstanding question. Are there other comments from either of the other councilmember, Dornbecker or Vice Mayor? I know we went from question to general comment, so I guess we can continue that. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Um, yes, I think that this makes a lot of sense, and the fact that it is set up as a business arrangement and does charge, as Celia King, our finance director, said, it does set it up as a business so that in the future, when we do want to raise the rates, we can point to it as an expense that we have to make up. So I, I think that this is probably the best deal we could get at this time, so that's my feeling.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, um, thank you, Steve and Cecilia and whoever else for running the traps to try to get us the, the best thing. I agree with the format that you have. I do have some concerns, though, as I look at the map with all of the years on it of all of our pipes, we have some old equipment out there, so I would hesitate if we think the fund can only bear about a hundred and fifty thousand in debt service, I would have concerns about getting really anywhere close to that ceiling. I also think although it's a business deal, drought contingency is a reserve fund. I think that makes a difference in what interest we can charge. I would be happy with the one percent over ten years to, I think that brings us a little below a hundred and twenty thousand a year. That leaves us a little bit of flexibility, we can always prepay if we want to. Because I do think the lower interest, this is an extraordinary circumstance. This is not something that we failed to plan for. It's not, not like we needed a loan, we knew we were gonna need a loan and we just messed around and didn't get it. So I'm sort of at one percent over ten years to keep us looking ahead with a little bit of a pad.
So I'm seeing one point five over ten years, am I looking in the wrong place, Cecilia?
I think that was, that was the recommendation in the staff report, but in the list of all, all the different scenarios, that is the, the first one in the second group, first line in the second group.
That, that wasn't one of the two you were recommending in the staff report, but that was another option?
It is, and it's, it's a little bit better option with, with a, a lower interest rate and a lower annual payment.
Okay.
I think it's actually one oh five, five eighty-two per year, at a million dollars at one percent over ten years, so one oh five, which would leave us forty-five, hopefully.
And I do want to clarify, the comment, Vice Mayor, I was making is, the current rate cycle built in, I mean, the dollar amount we're currently charging built in approximately a hundred and fifty thousand a year. So you're now talking, with a ten-year loan, you are talking two future rate cycles that you're gonna build that in and then still have to at some point, hopefully then we'll have a better analysis of where the condition is, but at some point, we are probably going to need to review and revisit the capital allocation side. But certainly, I think the more conservative approach and the lower cost, I, I certainly understand where you're coming from.
Thanks. Michelle, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not, Mayor.
Thank you. If there's no additional discussion, is there action on this item? Vice Mayor, did you have a, a motion to follow up? Vice Mayor, did you have a, a motion to follow up that recommendation?
Yes, just a moment, let me get my proper screen up. I would move that we direct staff to proceed with the inter-fund loan from drought water reserve fund 57 to water capital improvement fund 60 to cover costs of the emergency Washington Park main replacement project WA-0016 using a 10-year loan at 1% interest.
Thank you, is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you, motion Vice Mayor Dorman. Councilmember Dornbecker seconded, Michelle, could you roll call vote please?
Yes, thank you Mayor, Vice Mayor Dorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes.
Councilmember Muller?
No.
Councilmember Durham?
No.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that does pass 3 to 2, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our next item, LAFCO of Napa County Water and Wastewater Municipal Service Review Discussion and Possible Direction to Staff Regarding the LAFCO Draft Countywide Water and Wastewater Municipal Service Review, also known as the MSR.
Thank you Mayor Dunbar, members of the council, tonight we have for your discussion and comments, a review of the countywide service report on water and wastewater services. This was, as the mayor noted, prepared by the Napa County, Napa Local Agency Formation Commission or LAFCO. This is a state-required study of services within a designated geographic area, in this case, it's Napa County. This, the wastewater and wastewater service review examines services provided by the public agencies within those boundaries and the agencies providing wastewater and water services within Napa County are the focus of this review. This, I think it's important to note that the municipal service review or the MSR process does not require LAFCO to initiate changes of the organization based on their findings. And it only, that LAFCO identify the potential government structure options and some recommendations. However, the LAFCO, other agencies, or the public may use determinations to analyze perspective, legal authorization. LAFCO may act with respect to those recommended changes on its own initiative or in response to a proposal initiated by a group of people, registered voters or landowners. So with that, I will get into the nuts and bolts of this review, so next slide please. So, when they do the municipal service review, the MSR, they look at growth and population projections, both the present and planned capacity of the area, the financial stability of the organizations that are providing the services, if shared facilities, if any, or what those shared facilities might look like, and the governmental structure that manages the municipal services, next slide please. Little background for you all, this started in February of 2018 with the LAFCO strategic plan. The RFP was issued in September 2018. We've had a variety of drafts and comments that have gone out, it's been out for public review of the draft since May of 2020. And on July 13th of 2020, there will be a public meeting and comments for the public draft, next slide please. These are the agencies that are participating in this review. It is everyone in Napa County. The vets home wasn't included somewhat in this, but it wasn't, it wasn't as comprehensive as they would have, as LAFCO would have liked. And they are still working on getting information from them, but you can see the other agencies and districts that are participating in this review, next slide please. There is a format for this review, you all are familiar with the format. LAFCO has several of these out, and we went through our own SOI just a little while back, and it was similar type of a format, so executive summary was in chapter one, a little bit of background in chapter two, some overview and recommendations in chapter three, and, and then each agency or district has its own chapter, Yountville's was chapter eight, just to note in case you're looking for it, it is in your staff report in the attachments section, next slide please. The analysis for us was, or for, for the group, was that some utility resources are not being used efficiently or effectively. It's really some of the smaller county districts that just don't have any resources, very few customers, and and feel like they're, well, they, they, as a result, they're not operated, they're sometimes outside of the regulatory environment, and that causes some problems for, for them and their customers. And this analysis definitely pointed to some of that. A need for greater oversight of all jurisdiction providing water services in the county, this includes the vets home. A recent grand jury investigation did point out some of those, Yountville wasn't mentioned predominantly in those. We did have some things that we needed to fix, which we did, there are very simple fixes, some complaint, some, some ways to fix some of the complaints and track those, and, and, and things of that nature, nothing very substantial. A need, we need some support for buying on the spot market, that's especially true for Yountville and some of the upper valley agencies that don't have access to the North Bay Aqueduct. So we could certainly benefit from having some, a bigger player help us buy, get a better deal on the spot market for water if and when that becomes a necessity. There are certainly redundancies in many of the systems, not just the smaller systems, but, but many of the systems, which could be eliminated. Many of these systems are 50 or 100 customers or less. Berriessa Estates, there's a district up, up in Berriessa, around one of the resorts that has 50 or 100 customers. The Oak Circle, sorry, Circle Oaks District could probably benefit from some of the redundancies and, and of course, extra expense that comes along with those redundancies. And then a need for some occasional technical expertise and support, and that's especially true for some of the smaller water and wastewater systems. And they're talking about systems that are much smaller than ours in and around Berriessa and out in the county, but certainly, we could benefit from some of that as well, and maybe save a little bit of money on some of the consultant fees that we use for design and engineering, and, and use some of the in-house expertise that some of these larger agencies have as a part of their normal routine, next slide please. So for Yountville, the specific recommendations were to consider updating our muni code to restrict truck recycled water to prohibit development in the county. We don't get an awful lot of requests for our truck recycled water for those of the contractors and local vineyards who are aware, they are regular customers, but we don't, there's, it's, it's a rounding error for us in, in how much water we typically deliver in, in terms of truck recycled water. However, we will most likely be bringing, offering you an amendment to the muni code to help provide this restriction so that it makes it easier for us to to keep track of it and, and to satisfy the county's and LAFCO's request. In 2017, our MSR SOI recommended recommended a better collaboration with the vets home. I have had multiple discussions with both LAFCO and the consultants who were doing this study, and I agreed with them that we, we could have better communications, and if they had some suggestions for how we might be able to improve that, I would be open to them. They have also realized that it's challenging at times to get good communication with the vets home and a consistent message. I think LAFCO also strongly recommended resuming conversations with the county regarding the Domain Chandon annexation. Again, that was part of the SOI and something that you all had talked about at length during that review, that was one of the recommendations for us. And then finally, a continued discussion to create a countywide water district, and I think for us, the town manager and myself, this was one of the things that we looked forward to the most and advocated for the most, along with many of the other agencies, large and small in, in the county. We know and we're sure that there are many redundancies, and that we can create a more efficient and effective operation, if, if we looked at something like this and were able to do this, it would definitely be a big lift, but we need to start that conversation, because I think we would all be less at risk, we would have a shared, better set of resources, and it would be a better operation overall for all of the customers in the county who depend on water services, and, and at some point, even wastewater services might be a consideration as well, but for the topic of this discussion, it's really countywide water district that makes the most sense. We have the 36-inch line that runs all the way up valley, so we have the infrastructure in place that would help with that. And it would just, it lends itself to a an easier possibility if those discussions continue to evolve, next slide please. And that, that wraps it up, and I'm happy to answer any questions or comments you may have on this review.
Joe, thank you very much for the presentation. Are there questions of the presentation, I see Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, I was really surprised in reading these recommendations from LAFCO regarding water, the water supply and wastewater treatment, and I was surprised that they suggested or, or recommended that we resume conversations with Domain Chandon about annexation, what does that have to do with our water availability or wastewater availability? Is it because we provide them wastewater treatment and, and water, they're hooked up to our water? Or it just doesn't make any sense to me?
Well, I think they, they wanted to be supportive of the fact that you all spent an awful lot of time talking about it, and and of course, we do provide them with that service, and it's typical that they would be then, that conversation could continue. There's also a well up there that's a part of that agreement that we're, we haven't been able to, to connect to, and that annexation would help us facilitate that as well, so I'm not saying that that well could end or significantly reduce our water need, but certainly in a time of drought or some other situation similar to that, any resources that we have that are within town limits would certainly help us continue that service until we could get the normal water service or wastewater services back up and running.
Did they recommend that we, I'm sorry Joe, go ahead.
So I think those, those two things were talked about in the, in the MSR, and I think that that's what I'm focusing on for your question, is both wastewater that we provide to them, but also the well that's up there that we don't have access to.
To expand a little bit on Public Works Director's comments, part of our agreement with them is that there, we're supposed to be able to have access to a water supply from Domain Chandon. And at this point, it's questionable as to whether they can fulfill that commitment, and as Public Works Director identified, we don't have the access to the well, there'd be significant infrastructure. Moreover, there's also the greater potential that the, some folks in the county would rather see the tourist-serving aspects of Domain Chandon served by a municipal water supply rather than using groundwater wells, so there's two sides to that water discussion. But in addition, the annexation, most annexations tie to a couple of things, they're either going to be public safety service expectations that people want, or in the case that we see here in Napa County quite a bit, extensions of what we like to call straws, so there's, in this case, we're providing the wastewater service, the community was expected to get the annexation, it never happened. So typically, the host municipality that's providing the infrastructure receives that benefit, so it's just a recognition on the, on the part of LAFCO that that process has not been concluded, and as many of you know, we have a very unique history with how it started and then seems to have died, and nobody knows where the process went.
Well, have we not continued discussions with the county about Domain Chandon? What, do we not have the committee anymore?
Oh, we have had, we've had conversations, I don't know that they produced a meaningful forward agreement yet.
We've had a few meetings, Councilmember Dornbecker, we have not had one in many months, if not a year. We've had very little two-way communication, I'll put it that way.
And is it typical of LAFCO to recommend that, actually recommend that the agencies that they are evaluating should be in conversation with another entity about annexation?
More independent LAFCOs, it certainly is, yes.
Before I go to the Vice Mayor, Councilmember Muller, since you are very involved with LAFCO, did you want to explain anything right there?
Yes, as the council recalls, several years ago now, LAFCO approved what we call sphere of influence, an SOI, which included part of Domain Chandon. They, once it's included in our SOI, then the next step is annexation. Together with municipal service reviews and approving annexations, those are some of the very major activities that LAFCO is charged with, so since they approved our SOI, and the next step is annexation, it's totally appropriate for them to follow up and want to know exactly what's going on, because also, you're not supposed to extend outside municipal services outside of your jurisdiction, which we are in the case of Domain Chandon. So, as part of this municipal service review, since it had to do with water and wastewater, that was included as a follow-up because it hasn't been followed up, and the county and the town have to negotiate together tax sharing so that then LAFCO can approve it, so they're trying to move the process forward because it's certainly possible that they would have the authority to actually remove Domain Chandon from our SOI, that is under their purview as well.
And that process of conversation between the county and the town is required in the LAFCO process that you just described.
Yes, CKH is a state law, correct.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, um, thank you for the report, Mr. Tagliabashi, and thanks to everyone who went in on this report, it was quite interesting and very concise with a lot of information in it, so thank you. But I would like to focus on the recommendation of regionalizing our water and perhaps wastewater services, I am very intrigued with that, I've seen those work really well. And as we sort of think about that and plan about that, I just want to confirm, I think that, I know we can amend it to extend it, but I think on our main contract with the vets home, we have about two years left, is that correct? Or four years left? Two or four? But somewhere in the two to four-year neighborhood, I think, so is there, do you, Mr. Tagliabashi or Mr. Rogers, plan, since you advocated for this, do you plan to bring it sort of back to the council as a, a way forward to explore this?
I think, Vice Mayor, that first of all, I think we need, you know, there's no way forward if this study just sits on the shelf and does not have any action by the other municipalities. So for us to even have an alternative, I think it would be appropriate for, for our council to weigh in and say, we, we support and encourage those activities, and, and maybe even we come back at a future date with a point, you know, recommending two council members to serve on an ad hoc committee with water opportunities or something like that, because it, you know, it, it makes sense to me, and I will say that, we have been involved in this for quite a while, very involved in the scoping and the RFP. So I mean, I would be hopeful that the region would take a good look at what might a regional water supply governance look like. But the, the short answer is, got to have it first before it's something that we could consider. And secondly, what I would point is the, you know, we would exercise the renewal, but based on current council policy, we would be supportive of looking at what a regional governance structure could look like. Based on current council policy, we would be supportive of looking at what a regional governance structure could look like.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Tagliabashi's found the answer.
Uh, June of twenty twenty-four, Vice Mayor, you're correct.
Thank you.
Two years, yep.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Moeller, your hand is raised?
Yeah, I just wanted to also speak to that point, so uh, the major goal of this MSR, we uh are charged by the state to do. MSR to municipalities and special districts, but this was really a special project that came out of our strategic plan three years ago. And um, it is, in in my opinion, kind of the first step to that discussion about a regional. Uh, water supply system, so this was really designed to lay out all the facts, where is the water? Uh, how and the wastewater, um, which special district is controlled, how municipalities have control? And if uh we do have council support, I think that would uh mean a lot. And another possibility besides having an ad hoc to get together is that I would certainly advocate, and I think other LAPCO commissioners would too. To then uh have a follow-on project to this, which would really um have that broader discussion about what. A countywide system would look like. Not everybody would have to participate. If you could, a few. Other municipalities may not want to, uh, would we form an agency? Would it then be under a district? There'd be a lot of different pieces uh to maybe how that would work, so. Uh, I think uh the council encouragement that you'd at least be interested in that conversation would give. LAPCO uh a message that um you would like for LAPCO to take that next step as a special project to really. Take a look at that. It might not go anywhere, but at least they could put it together.
Yeah, and and casual conversations in other settings, up-valley jurisdictions have expressed an interest in this very conversation.
Correct.
Yes.
And that's why we started this one, because we had to get all the facts out. It's very comprehensive, five hundred and thirty pages plus of facts. But now that we have those, uh, it really lays a very nice groundwork for those future discussions. If uh we're. Uh, Yanville pays dues to LAPCO as well as uh St. Helena and Calistoga and the county, so. Um, I think with your dues, you can certainly have a great influence on what some of our special projects are next.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Michelle, do we have any public comment on this item? You're still muted, Michelle, sorry. No, that's a big no, uh, a visual no, thank you. All right, um, i- i- if there's no further discussion on this, is there a motion?
Well, I'd be happy to move that uh we support the um towns' recommendations in terms of uh. What uh public or what comments come from Yanville, the uh comment period is open until July twentieth. If you go on the Napa County website, we're going to have a Zoom meeting on. July thirteenth at two P M. and all the information's there. It's kind of a workshop. This is the first time everybody's looking at this. Uh, but I would be in support of the uh the staff's recommendation that that be part of uh comments to LAPCO.
I think with that clarification, what we would probably like to do is write a letter supporting and concurring with the LAPCO with the, excuse me. With the study report and recommendations to the LAPCO board. And have that be, if that's something the council supports clearly, you know, it would be stronger if it's coming from the council than just from staff.
I think I heard that as the Councilmember Moeller's motion, if you want to clarify that.
Yeah, I'll accept that clarification. Thank you, Mayor.
And I will second the motion.
Thank you. Motion, Councilmember Moeller, seconded by Vice Mayor Dorman. Uh, to uh accept the recommendation as presented in the report, or whatever the language needs to be, Michelle.
Thank you.
Please, uh, roll call vote.
Councilmember Moeller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dorman.
Yes.
Councilmember Dornbecker.
Yes.
Councilmember Durham.
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar.
Yes. Thank you. That passes unanimously. We need to go back just very quickly for a question on our previous item ninety B. Believe, uh, Celia, you wanted a clarification just to make sure we have the proper uh numbers in the. Action that was taken on the Washington Park Main Replacement Project?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, uh, Vice Mayor Dorman, that your motion was to go forward with the um. One million dollar loan at one percent for ten years?
Yes, that was, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And one other thing is, we will bring back the actual document. May have a different dollar amount based on what the award a bit is, so. Just so you're aware, if it's, you know, if we only need nine hundred and fifty, we're only going to borrow nine hundred and fifty. If we need a million one. We'll be asking you for a million one.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for the follow-up clarification on that item. Let's move ahead to nine D, Napa County Urgency Ordinance Related to Evictions. This is a discussion in possible direction regarding Napa County Urgency Ordinance temporarily prohibiting residential evictions related to impacts from COVID nineteen. And possibly establishing a council ad hoc committee to participate in countywide discussions that have already happened. In a less formal way prior to this meeting, so uh, Steve, I didn't notice, is this is this you?
Yeah, um, I'll try and give a brief overview. Um, in part, this is a conversation, as the mayor alluded to, that's been going on around us, went through the county, had some conversations. Um, and the county ultimately chose to do a one-month urgency ordinance that would get them. Through and addressing the month of July. As a result of it, um. Some of the housing advocates thought that they had done a a really good job of reaching out to people. But in hindsight, what we learned was they sought out certain people, but they did not seek out all of the, you know, all of the. Communities were not involved. They sought out some individual elected officials and as we all know. One elected official does not make policy, multiple does, so there's been a a little bit of conversation going back and forth. But the reality of where we're at now is if this is an issue, and it is, um, it's certainly a bigger issue in the city of Napa, American Canyon. And Calistoga, um, but is conversation has evolved, what about commercial tenants, residential tenants? Um, town attorney will advise you that there's certain language that. If the county wants to do an ordinance, they need to do it in a certain way during an emergency, so that's applicable to all jurisdictions. Otherwise, we have to do our own, it can match the county ordinance, but it has to be enacted upon because the county does not have jurisdiction. You may recall, and I'll use the social whole sort, the social host ordinance. The county has a model social host policy program, and then each of us have adopted. Individual ordinances, model uh modeling after that and putting resources into it, so it's, we're here. If if the council wants to be part of that ongoing conversation, because at this point, the county has indicated. You know, one, they've only done something through the first part of July. I don't see the issue going away. So the real question is, do we want to have two folks at the table having part of the discussion? Um, Mayor, you may want to expand as having been in part of those conversations, and I know Gary has shared with county councils some of the concerns that I. Mentioned that he advised us on how the language needs to be crafted appropriately, or if not, we have to come back and do our own.
Right, and there was um apparently some, I'll call it confusion about uh. Whom was going to be reaching out uh to all the jurisdictions. Uh, it didn't make its way to Yanville or um uh Calistoga a- at the very least. Um, and so we were brought in, Mayor Canning and I were brought in kind of at the last moment to um try to represent. Our jurisdictions and we said, you know, we don't have time to bring it to our councils when you're asking for this in twenty-four hours, so. Uh, we gave a temporary um. I'll say approval, but not really an approval, an agreement that we supported in concept, but that we wanted to be able to bring it back and have a discussion. Uh, to properly represent the entire council, uh, so that's what we're doing right here. Gary's already made, uh, he submitted some uh comments about the process and the content of the ordinance and how it uh might be improved. Some of the uh recommendations made by Steve and Gary were were taken uh by the county and modified. There were council members from uh other jurisdictions and a couple of other mayors that were involved in the um. Many weeks, if not a couple of months, uh, discussions with housing advocates, but it didn't uh ever get around to us until the last minute. There were very broad uh statements about tenant protection, uh, but there were no specifics. Uh, so now we have the specifics. We wanted to uh share them and get feedback. Uh, there is, as Steve said, the uh expectation that this is going to be an ongoing dialogue. One of the things I brought up was concerns, uh, I think we basically all agreed that tenant protection was important and there was a. A real uh concern about the status of folks that uh had lost their income. Uh, and couldn't pay rent and and we didn't want to see evictions happening uh as the governor's restriction ended. Uh, but also a concern about commercial, uh, because this currently is only about residential rents. Uh, but commercial rents were an issue I brought up and also landlord protections. Uh, there was some question about whether uh who has authority and jurisdiction over landlord protection. This ordinance does not do that, but it does something for a population that needed some emergency relief, so. We would want to have, I think we definitely need to have uh presence uh going forward with conversations. Because this would be affecting all of us throughout the county, uh, and so we can ensure better communication if we are part of that. Dialogue. Uh, Gary, did you have anything specific you wanted to add about this?
Yeah, excuse me, I will just add a couple of thoughts based on uh my review of the ordinance. And the some background of the suggestions uh that I asked for the county to put in and and some of them, they did, as you pointed out. The general rule, of course, is that the county ordinances don't apply in incorporated areas like the town and and other cities that are within the county. Um, there is some authority in the Emergency Services Act that seems to imply that that's possible for them to apply. Uh, emergency rules and regulations during emergency within incorporated areas. It's an Attorney General opinion says that from nineteen seventy-nine, and an Attorney General opinion's not binding on the courts, but it is given uh great authority. Um, the ordinance itself doesn't expressly rely on the Emergency Services Act, although I think that is what the county was relying on when they adopted this. So I think that there's no clear law that says this is the procedure to apply this in the incorporated area. The authority that says they can is an Attorney General opinion. On the other hand, emergency powers are broad and the county's emergency powers are broad, and so um the ordinance is adopted. Um, presumably under the Emergency Services Act, although if you look at the authority section at the beginning, doesn't expressly say that. So I think the options for the council are adopt your own ordinance that does something similar. Um, I think that that would likely imply within the incorporated area, notwithstanding the counties, and the county says that you can exempt it. Take the position that the county's applies within the town limits and allow the county to um enforce it to the extent they choose to. It's possible there won't be any enforcement. I'm not sure the county's made a decision on that. It might just be an affirmative defense in in a by a tenant in a lawful detainer action. Um, so I think those are the two options, you kind of adopt your own, um, or or allow the county to enforce this as to the extent they will. And allow tenants to avail themselves of it within the town. Happy to answer any questions though on that.
In that uh second option, Gary, if we were to adopt our own, it was basically meant to uh mirror. The county's ordinance for continuity throughout the county, if they were to modify it in any way. Would we would just need to revisit that and consider the modifications ourselves, or would there be an automatic? Change, I'm assuming you're being independent of theirs, we would have to modify it kind of manually ourselves. And it would not automatically, uh, we would not automatically go into the revised conditions of the county's ordinance, is that correct?
Correct.
And I think, um, Mayor Dunbar, a great illustration, as I mentioned, is that social host ordinance has actually been modified three times. And we've come back and adopted the revised version each time the county has updated their ordinance.
I I worry just from a timing standpoint, we have no meeting uh third Tuesday of July, no meeting the third Tuesday of August. And if they do modify this after the end of July, which I I fully expect they will, um, we don't meet. Uh, we have the one meeting in early August. If we miss that, then there could be a county ordinance out there that doesn't match the local ordinance if we go that direction. And that's a little bit concerning unless we were to have a special meeting to um line that up, so I just bring that up. If that's correct, Gary, that that could be, there could be some inconsistency in that time period.
Yes, there could be for some period of time.
Yeah, just just for consideration as we're looking at the two different options that are being presented. Okay, uh, any other, uh, any questions from?
Let's have one.
Councilmember Moeller?
So just um real quickly, if we uh do consider um adopting this, what I felt was really missing was, you know, some kind of uh. Information about there was going to be an application form and 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 the whole process. Uh, have you, have they, has the county shared any information about that with you?
I'm not aware of an application process. Um, I believe that the the ordinance, as I read it, and there's a the latest version that's included in your agenda this evening. Talks about an a notice under the Code of Civil Procedure, which is the uh notice to evict, and then also that it can be used as an affirmative defense. So my sense is that. Um, should a tenant be evicted in violation of this or be served a notice, that this will serve as the tenant's affirmative defense in court. The county could, of course, enforce it. It's been adopted as an ordinance, so it has the force of law, which means it's a misdemeanor and subject to fines. Not sure if the county has any, has expressed any interest in doing so, no.
There was also some discussion about um the uh process of negotiation and the authority over that. If there is a um inability for tenant and landlord to come to terms on deferred payments. Would it then go to the county district attorney for um? Decision-making authority, and there was some question about what that process would look like. It it sounded like everybody was assuming that people would would play nice. And that there would be agreements made between two parties, but it wasn't really explicit what happens if that doesn't work.
Right.
Well, Gary, go ahead.
I do agree.
Councilmember Moeller, hold on, Gary's gonna follow up and then we'll come back.
Okay.
Yeah, mine was a follow-up, I think, to Councilmember Moeller's uh original question too. There is a requirement in the ordinance that a copy of it be provided by the landlord to the tenant when a notice is given. I don't know if that's the notice or application uh that you were referring to.
Well, yeah, that I don't know what I'm referring to, because I thought, I mean, I do think trying to put something uh in place ourselves with our next meeting schedule is difficult. So I'm trying to cobble this into something that may be acceptable, but it just seems. I think you, uh, our attorney's already pointed out some of the the weak points. I mean, I'm just thinking, okay, my landlord calls me, I've lost my job. And says he's going to evict me. How do I know to call the county? How does he know that he's supposed to hand you this? I mean. Uh, there just seems to be so much procedure that's lacking. I mean, I've looked up other ordinances and they've got the whole forms attached and who to call, and this has got nothing. Is that coming later or is it just? What happens?
I I think that that's exactly why we're talking about potentially having uh ad hoc representation with the county conversation going forward. There is a recognition that this is incomplete and imperfect, but uh very timely and emergency uh ordinance, and so. There are not all details included in this yet, and and so that would be part of the dialogue we would want to be a part of. Uh, going forward as they, uh, I certainly see this extending beyond the end of uh July, and therefore we, if we want to adopt the the county's. Ordinance, we would want to be a part of that conversation about filling in those blanks that don't currently exist.
Well, I would be, that's kind of where my sentiments lie to do that, uh.
Other questions about it? I want to make sure if we have. I want to make sure if we have any public comment, but questions about the, the staff report? Are there questions yet? No, Michelle, let me check now that I'm thinking about it. Do we have any public comment on this?
No, we don't, Mayor.
Thank you. So any additional discussion by the council? I, just I'll offer it up also. I do think that it makes sense that we align ourselves with the county ordinance. I had my frustrations with some of the pieces that are missing. Certainly landlord protection is one, process is another one, about how do you enforce this and what is the plan if landlord and tenant cannot reach agreement? So I think some of those elements were left silent on this, but there was a recognition of it. It was very timely to make, to take action to address the July 1 rent that was coming due. And so they said, let's get something on the books and we'll, we'll make it more perfect later. The general, the general tone. So Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I'm very much in favor of making it, of working with the county on an ad hoc situation if we can, so that we don't have to go it alone. I appreciate the time issue and that it left it incomplete and imperfect and having an opportunity for us to join in, making it better. And I would be happy to volunteer for the ad hoc if one gets constituted.
Okay. Any other thoughts on this, Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yeah, I'm very much in favor of having this, you know, of throwing our lot in with the county and protecting the residents, because this is, as this COVID disaster drags on, I believe that more and more people are going to be in dire straits. So I believe that we should definitely go, go with the county in protecting them. Thank you.
Councilmember Durham?
I support the idea of having an ad hoc committee. I'd rather not be on that.
Okay, Councilmember Durham?
I agree. We, we should move forward with the county as opposed to doing our own.
All right. Any other comments? It sounds to me like we, we have consensus that joining in with the county ordinance is what we want to do, then the question is, do we participate in further discussions? If they formalize representation from each jurisdiction? I'm hearing at least one volunteer. Often, typically, we would have two, but.
I have a question. Don't, don't mistake my raised hand.
Oh, I, oh, I know, I saw that as a, yes, you'd like to participate.
I know you did. That was, that was my question. Why do we need an ad hoc committee when we, we discussed all our issues and those can be drafted to them? Is there going to be more participation with an ad hoc committee as opposed to us drafting all of our concerns to make sure they're included?
Yes, I think, hold on, just like Steve, I think what we saw a couple of weeks ago was the urgency that they took, and I'll say they, both the housing advocates as well as the county. Had we not pushed back on some of the content and been part of the conversation in a very narrow window, this would look different. And I don't know that we would be satisfied that us submitting, let's say, an email with suggestions would carry enough weight. Having been in on one of the, yeah, I was in on only, I think, two of the Zoom meetings of this loose group of county, city officials and housing advocates. And there were discussions and, and content that was put together long before Mayor Canning and I were even a part of a dialogue. And it was kind of a done deal. They were handing us a concept and we're like, well, wait a minute. We need to hear what the details are first. And so I do think it makes sense that we have representation as part of this going forward.
Understood. Our town loves an ad hoc committee, so I agree.
Hopefully it's not a standing committee, just an ad hoc committee.
I would like to nominate the mayor as well, because I think you make an excellent point. This is not only about tennis rights, but it's also landlord rights. And if that balance doesn't get in there correctly, I'm, you know, I, I think that's a very important point. So I'd like to make a nomination.
And I second, wait, wait, I second, that's fine.
Or on the ad hoc committee to work with the county. But you're a second, Mayor, or just?
And Marita already voted, so we're fine.
I begrudgingly believe that I heard a, a motion by Councilmember Mueller seconded with way too much luster by Councilmember Durham to appoint the Vice Mayor and myself as the town representatives on the, I don't even know if there's a name for it quite yet, Steve, but the.
We understand what we're talking about.
Yeah.
County eviction ordinance.
Yeah, but the, the countywide, the countywide subcommittee on tenant protection. I know how this is going to go, but Michelle, could you just make it official?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yes, without reservation.
Councilmember Durham?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, yes, yes.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar?
Since I'm opposed to abstaining, I will say yes.
All right.
All right, thank you. I do think it's an important issue that we need to, even though we are the smallest jurisdiction, this does affect potentially a lot of folks at work in our area, certainly at the veterans home, if not in our other businesses here. So it definitely has a local concern for us all, so thank you for that.
Employer.
Yes. Okay, so let's go on to our next item, which is the Yountville Arts Commission appointments. We did hold, oh, actually, I think Michelle's going to tell this story, so I'll let you do that. Go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the town council held its first successful applicant interview via Zoom for our Yountville Arts Commission on Monday, July 6th at 3 o'clock. And we had a great pool of applicants, seven total. We are recruiting for four members on the commission. Three of the positions, the terms are expiring and then the fourth is due to a resignation from a member moving out of the area. So we have seven applicants for four positions. Council, thank you for turning in your ranking. I've received all those and recorded them. And council has unanimously, well, unanimously, the order recommendation is Kim Cook as first choice, Rhonda, or Noel Resnick as second choice, Rhonda Shear, third choice, and Robin McKee, fourth choice. And those are the four positions that we need to fill, that we're recruiting for arts. And then we have Judy Meredith, fifth choice, Jeffrey Lee, sixth choice, and Grace Waring, seventh choice, based on the ballots turned in. So if there's no questions on who the four for appointment will be and that term would be commencing July 21st, 2020 and expire July 21st, 2022, I would ask for a motion to approve.
Before we go there, I just want to confirm, we don't have any public comment on this item?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. So, okay, go ahead, Councilmember Mueller?
I'll make the motion to approve the members to the art commission as proposed and voted on by the council.
So that would be, just for total clarity, Kimberly Cook, Noel Resnick, Noel Resnick, sorry, Rhonda Shear and Robin McKee can.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, there is a motion to that effect? Councilmember Mueller, you're a second?
Second.
Councilmember Durham, seconded that. Before we vote on that, I do want to just recognize if this goes forward or you, as presented, Grace Waring, Judy Meredith, Jeffrey Lee Lay, sorry, Jeffrey Lay, also were interviewed and felt very strongly that we had seven strong candidates. I think we all agree that it's, it's more challenging when we have more people than we have spots for, but it's also very encouraging to see the amount of interest in the Yountville Arts Commission and the talent that was on display in each and every one of the folks that was interviewed. So thank you to all of them, even those that have, may not be appointed tonight. So with that, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Michelle, if you would take that vote, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember Durham?
Yes.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we're looking forward to continued great things with the Yountville Arts Commission under the strong leadership of Samantha Holland. And thank you very much. Want to recognize Samantha also helping out with the interviews, Steve and Michelle as well. So continued good work by the Arts Commission. All right, next up, staff informational report. We have an update regarding TOT audits conducted by HDL Lodging Tax for calendar years 2018 and 19?
Yes, thank you again, Mayor. The TOT audit started March of 2020 and was conducted by HDL Lodging Tax. This was our first year with HDL as our TOT auditors. And even with some small setbacks due to COVID-19, it did go very smoothly. Again, records for calendar years 2018 and 19 were examined. As reported in HDL's executive summary that accompanied the staff report, there were both material and immaterial findings. The immaterial findings were based on the need for the hotels to separately itemize on guest folios for transparency and clarity in their charges. The material findings were related to the California Tourism Assessment charges. And this is an assessment that is levied on the hotel. Hotels are allowed to pass this fee along to the guests as a cost recovery mechanism. This fee is considered taxable rent if they do so and should be reported in their calculation. Four hotels were not properly factoring these assessment charges into their TOT calculation and that resulted in an amount due to the town. The total amount due to the town as a result of this audit is just over $15,000. The town is planning to move forward with recommendation number three of the executive summary and will therefore be requesting that hotels pay the uncollected TOT amounts for the California tourism charges, but will waive the associated penalties and interest with the stipulation that the hotels include these charges in their TOT calculations immediately and going forward. So this month, the, the audit will be finalized as HDL sends out finding letters, collects amounts due to the town, sends out a reminder letter regarding TOT exemption policies from the hotels and sends tax clearance letters to each hotel when appropriate. So are there any questions about this, this item that I can answer?
Councilmember Durham, question?
So I'm a little confused. Let's say hypothetically, I own a hotel and I, the Calif, Califor, Visit California assesses my hotel a fee to, because I do a, so California assessment is if I make over a million dollars, then I have to pay a certain fee into Visit California to promote California. Now, it's not, technically, it's not a T-bid, but I receive letters from Visit California stating that if I don't pay it, they will come after me for that. I'm confused as, and I know we have this conversation, but I still can't get it around my head that if I have a guest coming in, I charge him $100, there's a line item for TOT, there's a line item for the T-bid, and there's a line item for the California assessment, that that is considered revenue simply because it didn't go through the process that a Tourism Business Improvement District did? Is that correct?
Correct, Councilmember Durham. It is not an officially sanctioned tax. It's the same, it's considered, especially by our ordinance. You may recall, you know, hotels that have done a energy surcharge tax. Well, that actually wasn't a tax. In most cases, we're energy surcharge, a pet fee, a resort fee. All of those are, you know, incorporated. And that's why in this case, you know, it is basically association dues. And, you know, they're charging you as a business to belong and benefit from it. But by our ordinance, you know, and that's why I would also point out, you know, four of the hotels were doing it as a line item, the other seven were not. So it's something, it's an evolving area and it's been pointed out, but it is not technically a tax. And under our ordinance, you know, whatever you charge for a room is revenue. And you can charge $1 and have $50 parking fees. So it's just, it's just the, the technical side. I don't know if Gary wants to expand more, but, you know, it is, it's not a technical tax. It's a voluntary assessment, you know, professional dues, if you will, for the hotel operations.
So let me ask a question then. If, if someone stays at Vintage House and signs Perry Langs to their room, we're not charging them for TOT on that dinner. We're only charging them for the room tax, for the room revenue. If someone goes to the spa and signs it to their room, we're only charging them for the room revenue, correct? The TOT is a bad tax, not a general sales tax.
Correct, but there could be, depending on how the service is applied, it could be, it's associated with the room. So that's what I would say, the, the real language there, Councilmember Durham, is if it's an external charge not associated with the room, then it's not considered part of TOT. But if it's levy just for the, tied to the use of the room, then it is subject to TOT.
And so I'm assuming Visit California is taking a stance on this and is saying it's not room revenue, correct? Is that correct? Or do you know that?
I can't speak for Visit California.
I didn't know if you knew that, okay.
I would assume that they're trying to come up, how do I want, I'll say this, they're trying to encourage a method that gets them payment, because they want to be paid by all of you in a way that is more favorable to you. So that's how I will say my answer there. They would encourage that approach.
Gary, do you have something to add?
I know nothing to add right now. I just, I, I know we're, I know, so very good. Those are my questions. Thank you.
For your hypothetical. Any other questions?
For my preparation when I get called in front of the Fortuna City Council, yes, thank you.
Any other questions of the report from Celia?
I will just share, I don't want to lose sight over what's really a very positive. We are, as many of you know, we have a real history in Yountville and we were actually noted by the grand jury many years ago for being one of the strongest ones to actually have a strong policy and practice of audits. And I really want to, the reason I want to point this out is we reach out, we work with them, but this is a, this is nominal for something that's generating seven plus million a year on a $15,000 over the, it, it shows that our businesses are doing the right job, but it also shows that they know that we're doing this in the follow-through. And I just want to give credit, it was a transition. HDL has had some, you know, it, it offers some great advantages as we move online and they can wire transfer and do some stuff, but a, a few of our old school operators were more challenged. But I think we're starting now to, to get into a groove and it's proving to be a, a better relationship. But I do really want to give credit to our hotel operators for compliance and not having, I still remember a year when we had, you know, $100,000 plus owed us. So it's a very remarkable difference to see where the compliance is.
Well, and Celia's amazing year as Finance Director has extended to HDL's initiation with Yountville and TOT collection as we defer payments, we relieve payments and, and you get to manage all of that coming up here in 2019, 2020. So more fun to have, to be had coming up here with them. Any last thoughts, Celia, or are you good?
That, that was it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are moving on. Any other? Thank you very much. Okay, we are moving on. Any other informational reports, Steve? Or that's, that's the only one we had listed?
Nothing additional.
Great. Uh, council meeting reports, uh, do, uh, see flood control. We just adopted the 2020, 2021 budget, the last meeting. Uh, what else do we have? Uh, MBTA, Vice Mayor Dormin, do you have a report out on, uh,
I do. Thank you. We met on June 16th, uh, June 17th. We will meet again next week, uh, at the June meeting. Uh, Supervisor Pedroza and Napa City Councilmember Liz Alessio were appointed chair and vice chair. We have, uh, we authorized putting two things out for a public review and comment. One is the Vine Trail segment from St. Helena to Calistoga. And the other is the county-based transportation plan, which goes to communities of concern and how they, uh, have better access to public transportation. We also, um, did some funding applications for a couple of our large projects. We, um, we have the countywide transportation plan coming out, which is our look forward through 2045. We put in place the performance of measurements for that. We also previously, um, we also constituted an attorney of evaluation interview committee. I was, a subcommittee, I was appointed to that. We have completed our work and we will make a report and recommendation at our next meeting, which is next week on July 15.
Thank you very much. Uh, do we have, uh, an Upper Valley Waste Management, uh, report? And if nothing else, is there any update on, uh, we talked, I think, the last time about potential, um, trash pickup, you know, it, since we didn't really have the yard sale and townwide, uh, pickup day, is that still in our future? Councilmember Mueller?
Um, to address that point first, it's, uh, still in our future. We've just, um, put it on hold for now. So, um, things keep changing, so we keep putting it on hold. So it has not been officially canceled.
Okay.
Uh, the Upper Valley Waste Management Board met, uh, on June the 29th. And just to update, uh, I think Joe will like to hear this. We are going to distribute our grants. Uh, we have over $400,000 to, uh, um, divide up for grants. We've received applications from, uh, Yountville, the county, as well as Calistoga. So, um, looking forward to giving those out. We have a very busy ad hoc meeting with ad hoc committee, which I'm also on renegotiating the contracts for UVDS as well as Clover Flat and with the help of our attorney with the company. And our, one of our next steps, uh, in that contract is to start preparing a, a, a rate model. This will be a first for the, um, the company to actually put a rate model in place. They usually just, uh, have turned in their receipts at the end of the year. So, um, we have hired, uh, Bartwell's to help us with that, same company that helps us with water.
All right. Thank you very much. League of California Cities update, um, the deadline is this Friday for CARES Act funding applications to be submitted by cities to, uh, try to capture some of that funding that has been directed to the state of California. Steve, I believe you filed that application about a week or so ago. Uh, we are going to try to get, uh, the maximum that we are eligible for, which would be $50,000 based on our population size. Uh, so hopefully that will help principally go toward, uh, COVID-19 related expenses. And, uh, I've sent that, uh, reminder out to all of our Napa County jurisdictions to make sure that they get submitted on time. Uh, we have been holding virtual board meetings and, uh, executive forums over the last three weeks, uh, because everything has basically gone virtual. Um, and we are going to be making an announcement, uh, pretty much any day now about the annual conference that is looking more and more likely to not happen in person in Long Beach, based on all the, uh, coronavirus concerns and timing of contracts and things like that. So, um, continues to be an interesting year with the league and all things that are happening. Uh, also, there's not a clear understanding of when the state legislature is going to be, um, getting back into sessions. So, uh, we'll be talking more about legislative activity, uh, in the next few weeks. Other, Councilmember Durham and I have been, uh, working on a draft of the cannabis business permit ballot measure proponent argument. Uh, we have, uh, some talking points together. We're gonna put a narrative together, uh, shortly. So that ad hoc committee is working. Are there any other, uh, standing or ad hoc committee report outs from anyone?
No, but I'd just like to mention that, uh, just today, Calafco has also decided to cancel their, uh, live meeting that was scheduled in October in Monterey. Also not a surprise.
Right. I think, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Dornbecker.
Well, just that Nancy Bennett and I are discussing how to, um, hold a North Bay Division Zoom meeting. And we have a subject picked out that I think, uh, you're probably aware of, uh, uh, Mayor Dunbar. But anyway, it's, it's, uh, coming and, uh, we just haven't gotten all of the logistics figured out at, yet.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, let's see. Any other last reports? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Um, as we can tell from the length of this meeting and our previous meetings, uh, just because some things have closed down, the business of the town has gone on full tilt. Um, but I did want to bring up, all of the council members received a letter from, uh, some of our residents who had started the ball rolling on our, um, possible, um, conversion from gas to electric leaf blowers. Uh, they are asking for action on that. Um, I have talked to them. They do understand that we have one meeting in August and, you know, as things lay, I mean, yesterday at three o'clock, we thought one thing. Yesterday at five o'clock, we thought another. That might have been, that was Monday. So yes, we, we get news. I realize our agendas are very full, but I did just want to bring that forward for everybody as a reminder that, um, they are asking for action in the near term. And just, we should keep that more in the, we should keep that in the front of our mind if we can, as our agendas permit.
Thank you. Yeah, I know that, uh, our town manager has been in discussions with some of the folks that, uh, are opposed to the ordinance, and we have agreed to give them equal time before this council to present their argument, uh, as we did the proponents of the ordinance. And I reminded the, uh, folks, uh, the residents that brought forward the idea that, um, we have continued to consider this. It has not, as was kind of alluded to, been forgotten or come to a standstill. Uh, quite contrary, Steve's been in numerous conversations with folks. Um, and, uh, I've said that when Steve and I can determine that an agenda, uh, allows for sufficient, um, representation of the opposition and further discussion, that we will be re-agendizing this. Uh, I also reminded the folks that the council has already given its recommendation that anything that might be coming forward would not take place until at least January of 2021, if not later. And so there is no delay in anything that might be, um, enacted because we weren't going to do anything until at least next year at the earliest. That was prior to the pandemic. So, um, thank you for